We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Yonishnabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples. And it is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permissions to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the Committee on an application must complete a decision request form. These forms are available at the hearing room, at the doors, and at the end of the horseshoe. Please ensure that you include your email address on the form because the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. Once completed, please give the card to a staff member seated to my right. If you do not agree with the decision of the Committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, also known as T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local Planning Appeal Tribunal, L-PAT. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the Committee's decision. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications have individuals other than the applicant or agent who wish to address the Committee. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda, and will ask for individuals to identify themselves. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all other non-contested items have been dealt with. If your item is held, we strongly encourage the applicant or agent to meet with the interested parties outside the hearing room to discuss and/or resolve concerns or issues. If no person is present in interest, the item will be called in the order listed on the agenda for non-contested applications. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with his or her presentation if required, and the Committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the Committee, and I will comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the Committee, please come forward to the podium, clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. If you have a written submission that you read from, please hand it to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer when you are done. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the Committee of the application. And please note that the Committee may not entertain extensive revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The Committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We want to hear your views, however. Covering the same points is not required, nor will it advance your cause. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussions. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Panel members and staff, are there any declarations of interests for the afternoon?
No.
No? Okay. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed in the afternoon slot?
Uh, no, there are not.
Okay. Are there any applicants present who wish to withdraw their application? Okay. Are there any applicants present who wish to defer their applications? Okay, now, I did vet the agenda earlier. I'm not sure if there's anybody who arrived late who is here in opposition. I'll just quickly read the street numbers because the agents, except for one, I think, already identified themselves. So are there any people in opposition to 266 Havelock Street? 141 First Avenue? Okay, is the applicant for 155 Merchant's Wharf here now? Okay, is there anyone in opposition for that? Okay. Are there any people in opposition to 49 Burnside Drive? Yes? Okay. Where's the applicant for Burnside? You've got somebody who's, I don't know if you had a chance to speak, but perhaps you can go and speak to the item, we're holding it down. Is there anybody here in opposition to 178 Rhodes Avenue? 165 Geary? Anyone in opposition to 98 Glen Albert Drive? To Dingwall Avenue? You're in opposition? Okay, where's the applicant for Dingwall? Okay, you've got two people in opposition. If you can have a conversation outside the room, we'll hold it down. 1630 Bluer Street West? Anyone? Sorry?
I'm in opposition.
You're in opposition. Where's the applicant for? Okay, so you've already had a conversation. So I don't need to hold it? Is your opposition speaking? Okay, so we will hold it down then, sir. Okay, item number 30, 98 Hazelton Avenue. Anyone in opposition here? Okay. So the items being held are number 24, 49 Burnside, 28, to Dingwall Avenue, and 29, 1630 Bluer Street West. Okay, so we will start with item number 21, 266 Havelock Street. Okay, while you make your way up here. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, correspondence from George Taxidis, the agent, and a staff report from Tree Protection. Can we have your name, please, sir?
Uh, George Taxidis, I'm the agent for 266 Havelock.
Panel members, do you need a presentation, or can we go straight to questions? Okay.
I have a presentation.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
So can you explain about the basement walkout? That's the front, and what's the impact that's having with the front yard landscape?
Um, with regards to the front, we have been in communication with, I know there was some concerns from community planning, and we did have some communications, and they seemed to be okay with what we submitted. If I can, can I submit these as a supplement?
Sorry, what is it?
It's an email. It's communications with city planning, one of the planners there, and we had submitted some, we had put through the communications after they had some concerns, they raised some concerns, and we...
Okay, so this is after the exchange on September 19th?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
There were some drawings attached to it as well.
Okay.
Kind of addressed what you...
Thank you.
So this is the updated site plan here?
Uh, yes.
Can you briefly tell us what you've...
Yes, it's actually just a little bit more detailed to the existing site plan. What we did was, the impact would be, by adding the basement walkout, what we did was we shortened the existing porch to make it a little, to give it, so it doesn't take up very much more room with regards to, you know, we had to build a path from the main walk to the walkout. So that, I guess, would take some initial of the, some of the original landscaping. But for the most part, it somewhat stays the same. The house itself is quite close to the prop line with the porch, so we're just trying to minimize as much and keep as much of the front yard landscaping as possible.
So is this existing? Is this thing, is the walkway being moved?
The existing, which one are we talking about?
The front next to the tree, the big tree.
Uh, no, that one's staying there. That one's remaining because that's existing to the, the porch itself is, we're just shortening it. We're making it a little shorter so the stairs would remain in the same place because that's where the door is. So we're leaving the path there, and the part that goes north to the walkway is what is new.
So does that affect, then, any of the variances? Variance five for front yard landscaping?
Uh, it does not, no, not from the original, not from the original report.
Any other questions?
And is this typical, like, in this street, in this area? Are there other examples where there is...
Uh, there are a few. I can give you the address, but there are a few houses right on that street and parallel streets, but the ones, I took some, an inventory of the ones on the street if you want them. Would you like them?
Do you want to put it on the overhead?
Which one?
The inventory of...
Well, I didn't take any pictures. I have the addresses, though, if you'd like to, if you want those.
I appreciate your...
What's that, sir?
Yes, maybe you can just put it on the overhead so we can all see the addresses.
They're not plotted.
Oh, okay.
I don't have any pictures, but I do have the address.
Okay, so you can tell us the addresses, then. I wouldn't mind knowing how many.
Uh, the addresses are, sorry, 248 Havelock Street, 229 Havelock Street, and 243 Havelock Street. Those are the ones right, you know, somewhat in proximity to this one.
And so in that email exchange, a community planning staff member indicates an updated site plan. Is that updated site plan one that we currently have?
No, it hasn't been updated because there wasn't, there aren't any changes to it. This is just more detailed of what we were planning to. Maybe there wasn't enough detail on the original site plan, so we updated this one. This is basically taking what's, what we proposed and doesn't change any of the numbers. The slight path configuration, I think, might be different, but for the most part, nothing's changed on the...
And so in their email, they talk about tying the decision to the updated site plan. Does that, then, are you suggesting that could...
I guess that would be done, would that be done here? Could we tie it to the landscape plan? Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
On the third-floor deck, and I apologize if I'm misreading the drawings because they're quite small, there's, it would appear that there's no overlook problem to the south because the existing building extends beyond the third-floor deck that you're proposing. But on the attached semi, I believe there's a deck in line with the proposed deck you have.
Yes.
Is there a screen currently between those two?
I believe so, yes. There's a fence, like a privacy screen.
On their deck?
On their deck.
So there's no need to add one? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, take it into committee. Any comments?
Madam Chairman, I had concerns initially because we had a memorandum from the planning department that asked whether or not this item should go to committee, notwithstanding the planning concerns, which you've addressed that. It doesn't appear that, or it appears you've resolved those concerns. I had privacy concerns about the third-floor deck. It appears that those are all. Based on that, I am prepared to move a motion of approval for the application subject to forestry condition number one. I think that the proposal meets the four tests and is reasonably consistent with the neighborhood character.
Are you tying it to these landscape, more detailed landscape drawings that go along with the site plan? That's what's part of the plan area planners exchange.
Okay, fine. Subject to the project being developed in accordance with the front yard landscape plan and elevations filed with the Committee today. I don't know how else to refer to them. They don't have a number.
Well, date, 28th of October 19th.
Could you just say "plan submitted"?
Plan submitted today. Yeah, because they have the same title on them.
Okay, so I have a motion with those conditions from Mr....
He said for forestry?
Yep.
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Valentini. All in favor? Your application's approved, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 22, 141 First Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, email correspondence from the Acting Coordinator, Permits and Enforcement Parking, as well as nine form letters in support. Can we have your name, please?
Sean Galbraith, here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Panel members, do you need a presentation, or can we go straight to questions?
I'm fine.
Okay. Okay. No?
No.
No questions? Okay, so I need a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move approval of this application. I don't have any concerns with it at all, and my motion is, has no conditions.
Okay, do I have a second, or? Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Solomon. All in favor? Your application's approved.
Thanks.
All right. Item number 23, 155 Merchant's Wharf. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from Calvin Lance, the solicitor, an OMB decision from 2012, correspondence between our legal administrative assistant and development manager, planning rationale from Kirkcor Architects, email correspondence from TRCA. We have a letter recommending approval from Counselor Cressy, and correspondence in support from the West Donlands Committee, the Director of Parks Development and Capital Projects, as well as Waterfront Toronto. Okay, panel members, I guess there's, this is the one with tons of variances.
Yes.
Do we need a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Great, thank you. Name's Calvin Lance, the lawyer acting for Aqualuna Bayside Toronto Inc. The lands are owned by the City of Toronto. This application represents the fourth time that we've come to the Committee of Adjustment on the fourth phase of the waterfront development. It's being, it's being done, we're on the final phase, we're working through site plan approval presently. The architecture of this building was a result of an architecture competition, and 3XN was chosen. It's gone to the Waterfront Design Committee three times. It's, and we've got positive comments. I have large images of what's being proposed, and if I may, I'd like to just take you through a couple of key points relating to the variances.
Can I ask clarification? You've applied for, and you're in negotiating site plan control right now. It hasn't been granted yet.
Not yet.
So it is possible that through that process, you may have to come back for further variances.
Well, we were...
Depending on...
We're at the end of the site plan.
So you're pretty comfortable that this is what's going to go through?
Can I, I just want to, I should have asked you this at the beginning. You're in with a waiver. Like, did you have a zoning review done, or no? I mean, why would you? This is like a lot of variances, and we do have some concerns.
So the first...
Okay.
Similar variances.
Could you speak to the, the one variance that jumped out at me was number 12, because there was a very explicit requirement for a continuous colonade, and you're not providing that. Can you explain, is that a hole in an otherwise continuous colonade, or?
No.
Or does it exist, and why isn't it being provided? 12, yeah.
12.
Normally, that condition provides for protected, weather-protected walkways throughout, so I, I'm...
Bylaw.
Water's edge?
And in fact, none of...
So you've removed it on each of them?
Each of them.
Why is that? Because it seems to me that a colonade providing weather protection would be desirable. I mean, it wouldn't make sense now for you to incorporate it here if it's gone on all the others, but what was the thinking behind taking it off?
I think some people like...
No, no, it's fine, it's fine. I just, I'm, my concern was that if in the rest of the development, there was this continuous colonade, and through approval here, there's a hole in it, I was concerned with that. So you've explained that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can you speak to the parking? Because you're talking in variance number four about fee for parking, would that then not be a commercial parking lot you're creating? And then why do you only provide three spaces for the community center? I'm sure your argument's going to be it's for the people that are in that general area, but...
Yeah, sure.
Let's say for argument's sake, they have friends that have cars that...
Yes.
Want to come, like, is there more parking under the other buildings, or if you can just expand on that?
Absolutely. There is, so variance three relates to the parking, the three parking spaces. That requirement for a minimum of three parking spaces was at a request of the city, and they have to pay for those parking spaces, and they determined they only wanted three for staff, and that's for the community center.
So you're saying you were going to give zero?
We were happy to give whatever they wanted, and they asked for three.
Okay.
So that, that's the explanation on that one.
Where did the 14 come from, though? So presumably, there was some thought behind 14 for a community center.
Yes. That goes back to the original bylaw, and I wasn't part of drafting that bylaw, so I don't know what considerations went in. But going through this project and vetting what was required, they didn't feel like they needed 14, they needed three. And there is a cost implication for requesting those spaces, so...
And then what about the section that you're proposing to charge people, and how you, like, isn't that a commercial parking lot? Does that...
So, so in that case, what's happening there is a portion of the parking would be provided on a lot where they would pay. In fact, it would be about approximately 14 of the visitor parking spaces, so not all the visitor parking spaces, but about 14 would be on the area where they would have to pay. But there is ample parking in the area. It's just that all of the visitor parking that's required as a minimum in the zoning cannot be contained within the area that's designated for the residential units.
Okay. Any other questions, panel members?
So just back to that, I'm not sure I quite understand. So the fee for the motor vehicles, is going to be accessory to the residential parking spaces provided?
Yes.
And you just said there were 14 of them?
Uh, there'll be about 14 visitor spaces that wouldn't be accommodated with the parking that's for the residential, so those would be part of the available parking where you'd have to pay to park. And this is just for visitors.
Somewhere in the bylaw has the residential parking spaces inside, so that there's no...
Right, yeah.
Mr. Solomon, you have a question?
I have no idea how many there were.
Well, I had a lot of difficulty with this because there's just so many variances. We're looking at some 20-odd variances. How do you explain that that should be considered as minor as opposed to perhaps having gone through a rezoning process?
Okay. So I guess the one way I would approach this, and I kind of indicated this at the beginning, the building was designed like the other three phases, almost like shoeboxes, without the detail of an architect and a vision. It was very prescriptive in how it was designed, but in advance of architectural drawings, in advance of picking an architect or taking it to the design review committee. I can illustrate a couple of variances here, that in the absence of getting these variances, even the as-of-right building without variances could not be built. So that, that's the difficult...
Why through a committee process as opposed to getting the zoning changes through the rezoning process?
Yeah. The variances need to be looked at cumulatively, and we have no opposition. In fact, we have letters of support from the community groups, from the local councillor. And when you look at variances, an important factor is one of impact, whether the variances are individually or together, taking together impactful. And we, it's gone through a very lengthy and thorough investigation by a variety of stakeholders, and no one has come forward to say that there are impacts here with these variances. Plus, this is the fourth time we've applied for this number of variances.
I'll tap on my colleague's question. You're looking for an analysis of impact. I think it's quite unreasonable to assume that we are going to give you a thoughtful analysis of impact on this many variances, on a project of this size, on an agenda that has 39 items on it. The process here is not working in the advantage of...
47, sorry.
It's not, it's not working to provide the kind of in-depth analysis I think you need. And I share my colleague's concern. This is a very difficult application to review within the constraints of a Committee of Adjustment hearing when we have so much other development taking our attention. So I'm glad you have the confidence that we can give it the kind of attention it needs. I'm not as confident that it's getting the level of attention that it needs in this process.
And I think I'm surprised as well that we didn't receive something from community planning that would have explained and gone through each of these variances if they were in fact heavily involved. That, why we... I can illustrate a couple of variances here, that in the absence of getting these variances, even the as-of-right building without variances could not be built. So that, that's the difficult.
Why through a committee process as opposed to getting the zoning changes through the rezoning process?
Yeah. The variances need to be looked at cumulatively, and we have no opposition. In fact, we have letters of support from the community groups, from the local councillor. And when you look at variances, an important factor is one of impact, whether the variances are individually or together, taking together impactful. And we, it's gone through a very lengthy and thorough investigation by a variety of stakeholders, and no one has come forward to say that there are impacts here with these variances. Plus, this is the fourth time we've applied for this number of variances.
I'll take up on my colleague's question. You're looking for an analysis of impact. I think it's quite unreasonable to assume that we are going to give you a thoughtful analysis of impact on this many variances, on a project of this size, on an agenda that has 39 items on it. The process here is not working in the advantage of, 47, sorry. It's, it's not, it's not working to provide the kind of in-depth analysis I think you need. And I share my colleague's concern. This, this is a very difficult application to review within the constraints of a, of a committee of adjustment hearing, when we have so much other development taking our attention. So I'm glad you have the confidence that we can give it the kind of attention it needs. I'm not as confident that it's getting the level of attention that it needs in this process.
I think I'm surprised as well that we didn't receive something from community planning that would have explained and gone through each of these variances if they were in fact heavily involved. That's why we didn't receive something from community planning that would have explained all of this.
Okay. So if I may respond to those comments, I understand your concern. Perhaps then in the circumstance, it, it may be appropriate, if you're willing to do so, to defer this item, and for us to speak with community planning, and perhaps with their assistance, we could provide something at a, at the next community day.
I, I mean, speaking for myself, but based on, you know, discussions in the briefing this morning as well, are the concerns expressed by Mr. Nipful that all of us felt this was, you know, this is a lot of stuff, it's like four pages of variances for us to look at, and I think that a deferral, I would certainly be supportive of that.
Yeah.
So if some.
Well, if it was deferred, I would, I agree with, I, as well, I would support deferral. But I think if it is deferred, it should be so that the planning department can give us a report on this particular application, so that we're in better shape to make reasonable decisions.
That's very clear, you know, talking, like, kind of summarizing, if you will, what we have here.
I, I think that's a fair response, and, and I think it's the most expeditious way of, of dealing with it, to give you the level of comfort you need.
And, yeah, there would be the recirculation fees, sorry.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So I need a motion.
I would move that this item be deferred, and that it be, it come back together with a report from community planning.
Including recirculation fees.
Including circulation fees, yeah.
Okay. I have a motion to defer. Moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Mr. Nipful. All in favor? Okay, so it's been deferred.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item 24 is held, so we'll go to item 25, which is 178 Rhodes. Okay, we have before us copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, email correspondence from the assistant planner, acting coordinator permits and enforcement parking, staff reports from community planning, development engineering, and tree protection. Can we have your name, please?
Good afternoon, my name is Glenn Rubenoff, I'm the agent for this application.
Okay, panel members, do we need a presentation? Can we go straight to questions? And, and you're, you're aware of the planning report?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. And there's also, I don't know, an engineering condition, I think?
Engineering also, forestry.
And forestry condition number two, so you're all good with that? Okay.
I also have some letters of support as well, too.
Okay. Did, did you wanna submit them? Thanks. Do you have any questions, panel members? Okay, no problem. You have to bear with us, we have to use laptops now, although this is, this is a test run, January, it's gonna be all of us with no, no paper, so.
Understood.
Patience, patience. Here's these, if you wanna see them. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, no.
Can you just quickly speak to the, the variance requested for front exterior main wall height? Is this something that we've seen elsewhere?
Yes, if you, if you look at the overhead here, you can see the front wall, it's effectively a facade to match similar developments on, on adjacent properties, but that's what the wall height's for, the front facade.
Plans you submitted, though?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions?
Okay, here it is, here.
You're okay?
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Okay, so, we're in committee. Comments, questions? No, no questions, motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the planning conditions that the project be substantially constructed in accordance with the drawings, development engineering condition, which I gather you're familiar with, which is to speak to reverse slope driveways and forestry condition number two.
Okay, do I have a second, or?
Second.
Okay. Motion is moved to approve, moved by Mr. Nipful, seconded by Ms. Valentini, including the conditions outlined by Mr. Nipful. All in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you.
Item number 26, 165 Deary Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan and floor plans, correspondence from Edward Lee, the agent, a staff report from community planning, and correspondence in support from Mark Sherman, 383 West Moreland. And can we have your name, please?
Yes, good afternoon, Edward Lee, the agent for the owner.
Okay, you've seen the recommendations from planning?
Yes.
Okay, you're okay with that?
Yes, I do have, fresh off the press councillor bylaws, letter of support as well.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation, or can we go to questions? Any questions? No?
No.
Okay, we'll take it into committee.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the two planning conditions regarding the proposed restaurant. I think this is a very straightforward application, it really meets the four tests.
Do I have a second, or? Okay. Motion moved to approve, including the planning conditions, moved by Mr. Nipful, seconded by Mr. Solomon. All in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 27, 98 Glen Albert Drive. For the people standing in the back, if you wanna sit in the second row here, that's okay. All right, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, planning rationale from John Ramirez, the agent, and a staff report from tree protection. Can we have your name, please?
John Ramirez.
Okay. Panel members, do you need a presentation, or can we go to questions? Nope, okay, we'll go to questions.
I had just a quick question. I understood from reviewing the materials that the additional depth, length depth over the bylaw coverages because of the front porch and the proposals discussed debate underneath, or am I completely wrong?
It's the rear porch.
Oh, it's the rear porch, okay. But it's already existing, so you're not going beyond that.
No, we're not going beyond the porch.
Okay, thank you.
It's for storage, right?
Yes.
Underneath the porch. Any other questions? Okay. All right.
I'm ready to bring a motion forward. Given that this seems, this seems to be a minor variance in my opinion, so I'm prepared to bring a motion forward for approval of the application's subjects to the condition of urban forestry condition number three.
All right, do I have a second, or? Okay, motion to approve, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Solomon. All in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number 30, 98 Hazelton Avenue. Okay, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, 21 photographs of the subject property and other minor variance approvals in the area, copy of correspondence from, that was sent to the neighborhood residents, from Adrian Tauro and Sloan Maurin, the applicants. We have email correspondence from permits and enforcement parking, staff report from heritage, and we have correspondence in support from 98, 92 and 68 Hazelton Avenue. Hi, can we have your name?
I'm Janice Robinson of Goldberg Group, representing the owners.
Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation, or can we go to questions? No? Okay. Any questions?
I had a question about the building length, if you could just kinda go over what that extra length is and how is that affecting the abutting lots?
Yes, so the, the existing length of the dwelling above grade is actually not changing, it reflects existing conditions. The dimension that is with the variance, the 25.08 is the dimension to the end of the basement, which was extended below grade. So the actual length above grade is 22.2 meters, and that's the same length that exists. And on the second story, the length of the second story matches the rear wall of the semi-detached next door.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, we'll take it into committee.
I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the heritage condition, which you're aware of.
Yes.
I think this is a very straightforward application, clearly meets the four tests and is an asset to the community.
Okay, motion to approve, including the heritage condition, moved by Mr. Nipful. Do I have a second, or? Seconded by Ms. Valentini. All in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back to item number 24, 49 Burnside. All right, is the opposition still here? Can you come to the front row, please, sir? Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, previous committee decision, heritage impact assessment prepared by EVOC, as well as correspondence from Deema Cook from EVOC regarding the heritage impact assessment, covering letter from Tyler Peck, the agent, email correspondence from the assistant planner. We have correspondence from ravine and natural feature protection, as well as heritage. Staff reports from ravine and natural feature protection and heritage. We have 16 form letters in support from residents on Burnside and Witchwood Park. And we have correspondence in opposition from Timothy Hughes, the Witchwood Park Heritage Advisory Committee. Can I have your name, please?
Good afternoon, Tyler Peck from WND Associates, planning consultants for the owner.
Okay, can you give us a brief presentation?
Sure. The site in this case is located at 49 Burnside Drive, in the far southeast portion of the Witchwood Park HCD, with site driveway access off of Burnside. There is an intervening vacant property to the west between the site and the remainder of the HCD. The proposal, if you can put up the site plan, includes demolition of an existing gazebo and east side addition and garage, and construction of a one-story, si, east side addition and attached garage to the existing detached house. Reconstruction and expansion of an existing original third story is also proposed, and as part of the redevelopment, it includes general restoration of a number of the heritage elements of the existing building. The requested variances in this case before the committee are the result of a particularly unique site circumstance, where the lot technically does not have a public road frontage, there's a .37 meter gap between the lot line and the Burnside Drive right-of-way with access provided by an easement. As a result, under Toronto Buildings Practice, the established grade on this site is taken as an average of the points, I can't point to it, but the, the various corners of the lot, which in this case, because of the topography of the lot, where the grade changes significantly down on the west and southern lot lines, the established grade, if you can put up the next portion, in this case technically under the bylaw, is actually below the existing finished floor level of the basement. So therefore, the proposed floor space index in this case of .459 is, is a result of this, as it requires that the basement area is included in the GFA, whereas under normal circumstances for a detached house, this area would not be included. Excluding the basement area, the G, the proposed GFA is .324, which is under the .35 permitted in this area of the city. Excluding, including the proposed additions and excluding the existing basement.
Existing, or is it that?
.282, I believe. .324 excluding the basement, including the additions. With respect to the, the number of story variance, the house is proposed to remain a three-story flat roof building above grade as it is today. This anomalous established grade is requiring that technically the basement is included as a floor, as it's closer to the established grade, resulting in a technical four-story building, including the basement. The proposed building height is also measured from this established grade line, resulting in a technical flat roof building height at its highest point of 13.92 meters, whereas, for example, if this height was measured as per established grade under the previous bylaw, the building height would be 11.89 meters, which is under the 12 meters permitted in the area as well. The proposed additions are compatible with the existing house and surrounding neighborhood, and the visual impacts of the third floor have been specifically minimized through a sensitive design and sloped portions of the roof from the north to the south, as well as from the east to the west, as that can be shown on the next elevation. You can see the sloped portion of the roof there. In terms of the views, the next two views, the proposed additions have been designed to minimize visual impacts. The existing is on the left, the proposed on the right. The north wall of the proposed third floor reconstruction is in line with the original line of the third floor at its northeast corner. Based on feedback from Heritage Preservation Services, the third floor plan was simplified and made symmetrical in order to complement the geometry of the main house. The northern portion of the third floor is just .1 meters taller than the existing third floor, regularized across the house and then sloped up to the south. The third floor of the house has always been visible from some angles, and the proposed third floor addition remains subordinate to and complementing of the main structure, and remains very minimally visible from inside Witchwood Park. Community planning have been consulted and have no objection to the application. The committee, you have in your files a positive staff report from Heritage Preservation Services. As a summary, it states that the variances will result in a development that conserves the cultural heritage resource of the existing building, is appropriately, appropriately addresses and is consistent with the Witchwood Park HCD and the city's official plan and heritage policies, and is a result of engagement with both HPS and the Witchwood Park Heritage Advisory Committee. There's an HIA on file, and HPS staff also agree with its findings. We have 15 letters of support in file from neighbors. I've also received some additional emails since that point of, from four neighbors who are in support. And if you can see, you can see on this, the purple color are those who have filed letters of support, and that includes all immediately adjacent neighbors. The blue are those who have no objection but haven't filed a, a letter with the committee. My time appears to be up, so I will wrap up just by advising the committee that the application meets the four tests of the, of the Planning Act for Minor Variances, conforms to the neighborhood and heritage policies of the official plan. The intent of the bylaw with respect to compatible building height and flat roof height are met, as well as the technical issues with respect to the number of stories and floor space index. And the, as demonstrated by the support of the community, there are no adverse visual impacts or otherwise privacy overlook on any of the adjacent properties. I can answer any questions, or?
You've gone to some pains to make the third floor not dominate the structure. Can you, I, just because I don't understand from the drawings.
Sure.
Wood material is being used there, the rest of the building is masonry, but is this a?
Do you know, I don't know the answer to that question. The architects can answer that question. It's been specifically vetted through at Heritage Preservation Services.
My name is Meg Graham, I'm a principal of Super Cool, we are the architects for the application. Under the advisement of our heritage consultants and HPS, it was recommended that we use a material that was subordinate to the existing, so we are proposing a standing seam, either zinc or some sort of compatible, similar material to that. So again, it will recede, and that is the idea.
Absolutely, thank you. I also think that the heritage impact assessment is very impressive.
Okay, any other questions before I go to the opposition? Okay, thanks, we'll have you come back.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Ian McDonald. I am a resident of Witchwood Park, I'm a member of the Witchwood Park Heritage Advisory Committee, WIPAC. WIPAC is composed of four elected members and two appointed members. I'm an appointed member because I also happen to be a trustee in Witchwood Park. The first thing I'd like to do is compliment the proponent on the quality of the package and the thoroughness of it, it was very clear what was being proposed. And, and that's, that's unusual, and it, it's made everything work a little better. We are making a submission here today as WIPAC, the Heritage Advisory Committee, because of issues that this case has exposed in our relationship with Heritage Preservation Services, rather than, you know, we wish that the third floor was less visible, but, but we acknowledge that it's going to likely go ahead as it is, but we'd like to have on file our objection to that and our, for the, for the sake of moving forward with, with Heritage Preservation Services. WIPAC is made up of volunteers who put a lot of time in, and in matters of this sort, acrimony can develop, unfortunately, and I guess. And I guess everyone has been trying to do the right thing. We've had difficulty with HPS in the timeliness of their responses to us, and we didn't understand where they were coming from on some matters. With regard to this, Tim Hughes, who is the Chair of the Witchwood Park Advisory Committee, submitted a letter which I believe you received this morning and are familiar with. He identifies issues in that where we have a clear plan. Our plan is not a strong document, it has a number of, that's the whole list of issues related to additions to existing houses. And two of them, that additional work should not be visible from the park road, and that the height of an addition should not exceed that of the existing building, those are two very clear passages. And Tim's a lawyer, and he talked to the representative of HPS and said, you know, on what basis can you offer an exclusion to a clearly stated requirement or limit? And the idea was that it could be, if there's a good reason for the exclusion, then you can offer one, they can offer one to the proponents. So the reason that they offered was that the work would not be visible from the park road. So I have some photographs to submit. So it is visible, and to that end, I guess it's, you know, one wonders how the exclusion could be granted, but nonetheless, I gather that it has been. WhipAC, the committee at WhipAC proposed a minor change to further lower, there's already been one lowering of the third floor by 14 inches. There was a proposal that it could potentially be lowered a bit more, and that's been rejected by the proponents. So we'd be very happy to see that happen, but we acknowledge it's unlikely that it will. And that's pretty much all I've got to say.
Okay.
If the third floor was lowered, though, you'd still see it.
You would be aware of its presence, yes, but it would have less presence.
And is your concern that it dominates the major structure, is that your larger concern?
Yes.
It's the mass of the building, it's not the mass of the building, it's the...
Well, it is, it has more presence as viewed from the park road. We entertain applications from among the very 66 different houses in Witchwood Park, and every time someone does something that, where there is a regulation that clearly addresses an issue of height in relation to the existing building, the artifact, if that changes, then other people will use that as a precedent and claim that they should be able to do the same thing. Makes it harder, and it is clearly defined in our plan, so we had an issue with that.
Do we have any other questions of the speaker panel members?
Did you have an issue with the existing third floor?
Existing third floor is barely visible. Because it's set back from the north wall by eight feet, the current one is only five feet back. It's about a 40% closer, which gives it much more prominence even at its existing height. It goes higher, it becomes more prominent as well.
Any other questions of the speaker? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Peck, can you just speak to the issue raised, please?
Sure, there were a number of issues raised. In terms of process with HPS, the proposal has been designed through extensive consultation. I have a list from our architects of numerous meetings and correspondence since April, with several iterations of the design, some of which are in the committee's files, undertaken as a result of this consultation with heritage staff and with the Heritage Advisory Committee. With respect to the advisory committee, it is advisory to staff, and HPS staff are delegated with the authority to issue heritage permits, where an applicant, an application rather, is consistent with the HCD plan. It's very clear from their report that they support the proposal, and they support the conclusions of the HIA referenced by the committee member earlier, that the proposal is consistent with the HCD plan. I accept and I recommend that the committee accepts the professional advice of the HCD, or the HIA consultant, as well as HPS staff in this case. With respect to visibility of the building, the proposed design is sensitive. It's been designed through extensive consultation, issues related to collating window placement. The existing third floor is 1.26 meters above the parapet. This has been visible since 1922, we have a photograph of the third floor, visible from a portion of the park. The visibility of 49 Burnside Drive is also quite limited within the park to a small area and generally only in the winter months. The sections of the HCD plan that Mr. McDonald referred to do allow for interpretation and exceptions to be considered if the addition is considered to be compatible with neighboring houses and the overall character of the park. It's clear from the extensive analysis that's been done by both heritage staff and our heritage consultant that this proposal in this case meets that test. And I would just lastly and quickly point out to the committee staff that the reason we're before you with these variances for height, et cetera, is actually largely to do with the unique technical nature of the established grade on this particular site. And happy to address any of the committee's questions regarding that.
Panel members, do you have any more questions of Mr. Peck?
Are you able to show us a diagram that shows the comparison of the existing third story compared to the proposed reconstruction of the third story and how the change is?
Okay, yeah. So the section here, the dark black line is the existing building. The dash line is the height, the lower dash line is the proposed height of the north wall, so that's the one facing the park and the neighbors to the north, which is at .1 meters taller than the existing building. It's been provided as symmetrical and still subordinate to the existing building as per the heritage comments. And then the roof slopes back to the rear at the proposed height. And actually, while I think of it in terms of the proposal to lower the height, the height was lowered from earlier iterations by more than a foot, and the applicant and their team did have gone above and beyond in terms of consultation and reviewing the feasibility of further lowering the height, and it's simply not feasible for structural reasons, headroom reasons, and one other reason that I can't recall off the top of my head. Yeah, that's just the internal design and functionality of the space to allow for usable reconstructed space.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, so we'll take it into committee.
Madam Chairman, as I indicated earlier, I was, and I gather Witchwood Park as well, was very impressed with the heritage impact assessment that was undertaken. I think there's been goodwill shown on both sides, and talent also is demonstrated in trying to make the top floor as inconspicuous as possible. It appears to me that, we have a difference of opinion, but that Heritage Preservation Services is under the impression that they've listened to and responded to Witchwood Park. In their report to us, they've said that the revisions to the plans are the result of Witchwood Park feedback on the proposal, perhaps not exactly as you would wish, but they have tried as best they can to respond to the comments that were made by Witchwood Park. And I think the proposal that's before us is a reasonable one. I think the variances that are requested are reasonable, and I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the heritage condition, which is standard one about submitting drawings for permit.
Motion to approve including the heritage conditions, moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Solomon, all in favor. Your application is approved.
Thank you.
Sir, did you fill out the decision request card? Okay, I'm not, I think there, where are they? Yeah, maybe fill one out and give it to staff? Okay, thanks. Okay, the next item is item number 28. Right there. Okay, Two Dingwall Avenue. And if the opposition's still here, if you can grab a seat on the side here. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, an arborist report from Jody Steiger, a certified arborist, email correspondence from the assistant planner, eight form letters in support from residents on Dingwall and Karla, as well as one on Pape, opposition from number six and number four Dingwall. All right, so if we can have your name, please, and...
Yes, my name is Francesco Marte. I'm one of the principals of the Large Medium Design Office, and we're the architect for this project at Two Dingwall Avenue.
Okay, so you have five minutes for a presentation.
So the proposal is for a rear, the bulk of the proposal is for a two-story rear addition. It is going to also have a rooftop deck on that second floor, which is a kind of walkout from their third floor space. There's also a small addition, which will be a pop-out on the front of the house. And also, part of that proposal is that there will also be a walkout deck with as well a green space, or a roof, a green roof on the portion that you cannot walk on. Oh, sure.
Oh, disconnect, this has happened to me past six times, you have to disconnect and reconnect.
Apologies for that. So you can see the, there's a two-story addition. The bulk of that addition is in alignment with the one-story addition of the adjacent and attached neighbor at Four Dingwall. There is a cantilevered portion that pops out, sorry, I can't read the dimension from here, but I think it's about two feet or so from that addition as well. And then the upper portion, as I mentioned, will be used as a rooftop deck as a walkout from the third floor space. We have, I know that the committee has on file a number of letters in support of the proposal, I believe there's nine in total. There is one that didn't make it into the file, I can provide you with that if...
We have eight.
Yeah, I have the ninth with me, I can provide you with that if you would like. And, sorry, I just lost my train of thought there. And so we feel that the two-story addition in the back and also the pop-out at the front is obviously in keeping with the neighborhood. We find that the number of variances that we have, and we're seeking are minor in nature, and are seeking for approval for the project.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions before we go to the opposition? No? Okay, so we'll have you back after we hear from the opposition. Thanks. Okay, how many people are speaking? Two, okay. Okay, so we need your name and address.
My name is Christine Kim, and I reside at Four Dingwall. It's the semi-detached home that adjoins to Dingwall Avenue.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Well, I guess oddly a little bit nervous, so I'll try to get through this. I was, first of all, not consulted about my neighbor, and I believe we have good relations regarding the request for the relief by the bylaw. I was notified two weeks prior to the submission date. However, upon receiving notice and carefully reviewing the proposed plan, my position is to object to the variances requested. I believe they are not minor in nature, and if granted, they'll create a built form that is out of keeping with the character of the neighborhood. In addition, the negative impact of the proposed changes upon my home are significant. In particular, the effects of privacy, light and shadowing are significant, and I believe well beyond minimal. If, in the submission letters, I attached photos, I'm not sure if they're in front of you. And if not, I could just put them on the projector as well.
Well, we have pictures, but they don't come out very well because they're photocopied.
Would it be helpful if...
If you have the actual pictures.
Okay, thanks. So if the requested relief is granted and development is permitted of the floor space index at 1.04 times the lot area as opposed to allowable FSI of .60. So I just want to demonstrate here is, these are the following reasons in terms of how it would impact my house. I'm going to take that off only because I need to read the notes off my paper. Not as organized. So the primary reason I actually chose to live at Four Dingwall, it was over a decade ago, was the unusually bright lights throughout the home. There's extensive skylights, especially those on the ground floor. The proposed renovations would be blocking and providing shadow and blocking of the skylight, as you can see. My home has a one-floor northeast addition, a sunroom with a bay window on the south side, as you have seen, with double glass doors. Looking through the skylights in the direction of Two Dingwall, we currently see the tree and skies, and light enters the house. If approved, the applicant's three-story addition, including the east wall on the outdoor deck, would be visible and would block significant light and would greatly impact my and my family's privacy. Outside of the east wall double doors is an outdoor seating area, like a little patio set, with a roof which is another two large skylights. I was told that there are some sort of personal reasons why the expansion of the house, and I actually don't feel, I'd like to disclose why the skylight and lighting is important for my family as well, mainly because I'm on YouTube, but I feel that that information is private. I just want to demonstrate to you what I look at when I sit in the sunroom. That's a view from the backyard at the bottom, and from the top, that is one of the skylights. That, my couch is right underneath, and this is where I sit whenever there's light. Can I move on? Okay. Needless to say, we spend most of these times in these spaces because of the lighting. On the second floor, yeah.
I had trouble, but then the photographs are really dark in what I had.
Yeah, can I...
You have three, you have three skylights.
I have two in the sunroom, and the third one is on the outside patio.
Okay, that makes sense then. Okay, it looked to me like the addition at the back was larger than this.
That's just one of the skylights, and in the back, there you go. Total three.
So for how long of the day would there be impacts on those skylights from a two-story addition adjacent to that?
It's a three-story, sorry, three-story.
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand what's the...
The two-story addition.
What's the impact, and for how long for those skylights during the day?
So the question is, is how much, how would the new additions impact the lighting of my area? Well, one thing I do know is when I sit out there in the morning, I couldn't, right now I see sky, and it's very bright, and what I would view now would be their side of the home.
You just keep saying it's a three-story addition, it is a two-story addition. Do you understand that?
So it's a two-story with a balcony.
Okay, but technically it's...
Right, okay, yes. The wall would be the...
I wanted to make sure you didn't think it was going three full stories.
Right, with the balcony, okay, thank you, thank you for that clarity, yes, that's my understanding as well.
Do you have a lot more in your notes, because I'll give you a little bit of extra time, because we've interrupted by...
Okay, yeah, yeah. So the other two rooms that it would impact is my daughter's room, which is facing the street of Dingwall, and again, it has bay windows, and their addition would impact, just in terms of, my concern is around lighting and privacy. privacy. The third piece here is the room is my home office. I'm a family mediator and trainer, and I do a lot of work at home in terms of my writing, and that sunlight is crucial in terms of why I even chose that house in the first place. I'm conscious of time, so I'm going to just move quickly. In closing, to my understanding, any variances impact on light, shadowing and privacy are to remain minimal. A variance is a privilege rather than a right and ought not to be afforded when it causes significant negative impact to my adjoining home. The proposed front and back additions, and so all of the proposed variances, would cause significant negative impact on privacy, lighting, and, as you see, three critical rooms in my adjoining home. As my understanding, neighborhood development is limited, is intended to be sensitive and gradual with little visible change and with the neighborhood density and character remaining. I do believe the applicant's proposed front and back additions are beyond the prevailing character of Dingwall Avenue. For these reasons, I ask that you consider that the floor space index variance alone as not meeting the requirements as being minor in nature. In fact, my opinion, they're quite major.
Okay, I do need you to wrap up now.
So, I think that's it from my end, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions of the speaker panel members? No? Okay, thank you. Yep?
My name's Elizabeth Squizado, and I live at 6 Dingwall Avenue. I'm just going to read this. "My partner Dana Stewart and I own the property at 6 Dingwall, and we're here to express our strong objection to this request for variances at 2 Dingwall Avenue. We've been in the house for over 21 years, and we've never attended a variance hearing. And we've had a number of variance requested, you know, notices over the years at our house, and we've never contested any of those. However, these requested variances aren't minor, and they don't reflect the existing characteristics of the neighborhood. They represent substantive changes that will have significant adverse impacts on our home and property, as well as those of our neighbors and of their properties. We want to be clear that we're not against development. We want to see appropriate, desirable development that adheres to the vision of neighborhoods in Toronto's official plan. Our neighborhood is compact and densely populated with smaller lots and houses situated closely to adjoining homes. It's a low-scale residential neighborhood with distinctive characteristics, and it is zoned as one of Toronto's established neighborhoods. Our neighbors at 2 Dingwall Avenue have made a choice about the size of their home and the use of their property. They propose to build a significantly bigger house on their existing lot. Their proposal includes two additions that will provide them with bigger living room and dining room areas on the ground floor, as well as addition of a new bathroom on the ground floor. It will allow for the enlargement of two existing bedrooms and an existing bathroom on the second floor, and it also includes expanding their outdoor space with the addition of new second-floor rooftop deck at the back and a new smaller rooftop deck at the front." So, I'll begin to address our concerns about the proposal with an excerpt from the official plan. It's called... The section is "Making Choices." "There's no such thing as an isolated or purely local decision. Each of us makes choices about where we live, work, play, shop, and how we travel. They seem to be small choices, but together and over time, the consequences of these choices can affect everyone's quality of life, and that's why planning matters. Toronto will grow. Our choice is not whether we'll grow, but how we will grow. Making Toronto better should always come before making Toronto bigger, but we understand that Toronto will be bigger." And now, I'm going to quote from the official plan in a lot of places. "The official plan states that the stability of our neighborhood's physical character is one of the keys to success of Toronto's success," and that's from Chapter 4, Section 1 of the plan. The official plan also says, and I quote, "Physical changes are meant to be sensitive, gradual, and fit the existing physical character," again, the same chapter. "A key objective of the official plan is that the new development," and I quote, "should respect and reinforce general physical patterns in the neighborhood," same chapter. And from Chapter 4, Policy, Section 5, Subsection CF and G, "Development in established neighborhoods will respect and reinforce the existing physical character of each geographic neighborhood, including, in particular, the prevailing heights, massing, scale, and density of nearby residential properties, the prevailing setback of buildings from the street, and the prevailing patterns of rear and side yard setbacks and landscaped open space." The official plan states that infill housing, which includes this kind of addition and renovation at 2 Dingwall, will have, and I quote, "Have heights, have heights, massing and scale that are respected of those permitted by zoning for nearby residential properties, will have setbacks from adjacent residential properties and public streets that are proportionate to those permitted by zoning for adjacent residential properties, and shall provide adequate," and this is really important to us, "adequate privacy, sunlight, and sky views for occupants of new and existing buildings by ensuring adequate distance and space between existing building walls." Now, I'll turn to the zoning bylaws. "And the zoning bylaws set maximum floor place for buildings in neighborhoods that are proportionate to the size of the lot, maximum heights for structure, as well as minimum setbacks for lot lines and minimum distances from adjoining walls. The proposed bylaw variances, if allowed, would result in a structure that exceeds the permitted floor place, space index by 92.6 square meters, and that's a 74% increase above what's permitted in terms of floor place index for this property. It will also exceed the maximum permitted height by .42 meters, and it will reduce the minimum separation differences, distances from sidewalls as well as setbacks from side lotlines to 0.00 meters. The variances, if granted, would result in additions that are out of character with the general physical pattern of our neighborhood and would include the addition of a large new story, two-story structure with a rooftop deck that will loom over our backyard, depriving us of sky views, sunlight, and privacy in our backyard."
Sorry to interrupt, but do you have a lot left in your submission?
Not a ton.
Okay, I'll give you another minute. Okay, that's it.
And it'll obstruct natural light in our home. "The obstruction of exterior sunlight, interior natural light, and current sky views in conjunction with lack of privacy expectations will negatively affect our enjoyment of our home and our outdoor green spaces. It'll impair the health of our trees, gardens, and grass, and those of our neighbors. We're concerned that this will also set a precedent whereby new applicants for additions in our neighborhood will rely on this precedent." So, in summary, the requested variances aren't minor. The proposal is not desirable for appropriate development and use of land and the existing building at 2 Dingwall Avenue. The proposed variances are contrary to the general intent and purpose of the city's zoning by code and bylaws and of its original official plan. So, in closing, our neighbors at 2 Dingwall want to build a significantly larger house on their existing lot. Their neighbors, us, will bear the consequences. It'll significantly affect our quality of life and those of our neighbors. This proposal is about bigger, but not about better. And for all those reasons, we respectfully ask the committee not to approve these zoning variances.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker panel members? No? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Martire, if you can please address the concerns that were raised.
Yes, may I approach? I just have a couple of sunshade studies that I'd like to offer.
Are you going to speak to those?
I will, but I think I can do it from...
I was going to suggest you put it on the overhead.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thanks. If there's a microphone there, you can maybe just push the button and... Try that. Is there...
No, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I can't see you, but...
That's fine.
I just want to address a couple of the issues that were raised. In particular, the first one perhaps is one that not in character with the site. The site is certainly not as homogeneous as it's being made out to be. These are... All of these houses, with the exception of this one here, are all on Dingwall Avenue, you know, in relative proximity to the subject property. The last one here is on Frizzle Avenue, which is just north, and that house shares a laneway. So, in terms of not in keeping with the neighborhood, you can see that there's a lot of variety already in the neighborhood that exists. With the issue of GFA, the committee... So, I've done a bit of research in terms of trying to find some precedent. In back in 2008, 11 Dingwall looked at... They were seeking .97 times lot coverage, and they were approved on that. In 2016, 23 Dingwall was looking at 1.3 lot times coverage, and they were approved on that. And then, 90... Or sorry, 47 Dingwall in '28 was looking for 1.14 lot times coverage, and again, they were approved there. So, you can see that there is certainly precedent in neighborhood for projects that have increased their lot area. I think what's also... What should be pointed out is the existing houses, in particular, this house, it's already at .82 lot times coverage. In terms of... One of the individuals had asked about how much time is the neighboring... Are there neighboring lots in shade? So, if we look at... So, we've done a number of sunshade studies. So, we'll look at the upper one here on March 21st. So, that's without the proposed addition. You can see that the bulk of the single-story addition on the flanking or attached neighbor already, all three of those skylights are in full shade. If we look at the bottom, again, we're looking at December 21st now, again, in full shade. What I think is hasn't been made clear is that essentially, this is a north elevation, and I realize because of the grid that it will get some western light. And so, what we did look at then are June 21st in terms of the longest day of the year and looking at... So, we look at the upper portion here at noon. Without the addition, essentially, the bulk of those skylights are in shade, and you can see the exact same time and date down below with the proposed addition. There's in fact no change to the amount of shading on the adjacent addition. And again, if we look at the same date of June 21st, if we look at that in terms of the amount of shade, we're looking at the first skylight being in partial shade, beginning at about 1:30, and then it's until about 3 o'clock where you start to see all three in shade. So, on the longest day of the year, which obviously would be the worst-case scenario, we would begin to start to get some shade for approximately a period of time of about two and a half hours during a kind of western exposure. In terms of the front addition, again, if we look at March 21st at 3 o'clock in the existing condition, essentially, you're getting shade from the overhang. And then, if we look at, again, March 21st at 3 o'clock now with the proposed addition, you are getting some shade on the window of the attached neighbor, but it never affects the bay window at that point. And again, if we look at June 21st, again, the effect of the pop-out at the front has virtually no effect at all because of the sun angle and because of the overhang of the existing roof. And if we look at, again, December 21st with the proposed addition... Oh, sorry, without the addition at the top and with the proposed addition at the bottom, again, the amount of shade that's being cast in the adjacent neighbor is quite minimal. In terms of views, there will be some obstruction of the view at a particular angle from the adjacent neighbor in terms of viewing through their skylights. So, if they're looking essentially in the western direction, they will have... They will see a portion of the addition. Of course, if they looked in the direction of looking at true north, you're still getting a view. The light that is coming in from those skylights because of the northern exposure is essentially indirect light. The only time where it will have some portion of shadow being cast from the addition is during that time in June 21st. That's, as I said, the worst-case scenario. It would start to get better as you start to move either side of that date. In terms of privacy issues, you'll notice that on the west... Oh, sorry, on the east elevation, that is to say, the elevation that separates the adjacent neighbor, the attached neighbor, this is going back to the rear addition, we've actually made that taller in order... That is to say, taller than the required guard height that I would need there. And we did that because I was worried about the fact that we might have issues of privacy or overlook into the adjacent skylights.
Okay, any questions, panel members? Okay, thank you. We'll take it into committee. Okay, any comments or a motion?
Comments? I am satisfied having seen the sunshade diagrams in terms of the impacts in the rear yard, and so I would move approval of the requested variances.
Okay, I have a motion moved by Mr. Solomon to approve the variances. Do I have a second or...
My reservations, the proposal hinged to a certain... Well, I think the drawings or the examples you just showed us clearly indicate that this building has much more substantial bulk than its neighbors. But some of that, to me, is due to a design decision where you've got a loft space from the second floor up to the third floor, which then does double duty as a barrier to the patio, if I'm reading your drawings correctly, so that the north edge of the patio is in fact quite substantial because it allows for a two-story space over the living room. Am I correct?
You're absolutely correct in saying that, and the reason for that is that we purposely wanted to kind of thicken up. There's a number of reasons why that happened.
Thicken up for privacy.
Is for privacy, and...
Correct.
That's right, yes. We felt that the... Also, it's the size of the rooftop deck. It was just... We thought it was too big, and so this had this additional benefit of thickening up essentially what would amount to a parapet wall so that you wouldn't... You would try to eliminate the issue of privacy or overlook issues.
It's a clever solution. Unfortunately, at least on drawings, it gives the impression of the building being bulkier than it is. It's a good solution to address privacy, though, much better than a solid wall. I'm...
Okay, do you have any other questions before we go back into committee?
No, that was my question. Well, in part, because there is a third store, and then there's a story, and then there's a...
The third story is existing.
And then there's a deck, and then this projected second or fly space above the living room, which gives the impression of it being a third story, yeah.
With all due respect, I would still need a...
We're back in committee here. So, we did have a motion on the floor here to approve the application. So, is there a second or...
Madam Chairman, I think that the applicant has shown sensitivity with regard... Madam Chair, I think that the applicant has shown sensitivity with regard to privacy, with regard to loss of sunlight and so forth, to the maximum extent possible. I don't believe that the floor space index in this particular case, what is being asked for is out of line with the area, and therefore I'm prepared to support the motion.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the application, moved by Mr Solomon, seconded by Mr Nipoll. All in favour. Okay, your application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and have you folks filled in the decision request cards? Okay, so you'll be notified of the committee's decision. Okay, the last application in this time slot is 1630 Bluer Street West. Is the opposition still here?
Yes.
Okay, can you grab a seat on the side, please? Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey site, plan floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from Neil Rogers, the agent, correspondence from Catherine Krug, also an agent, staff report from community planning, as well as a report from the development coordinator, property planning and development from the TTC, which is for information only. Can we have your name, please?
My name is Neil Rogers. I am the applicant. I'm also one of the owners of 1630 Bluer Street West.
Okay, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Today we are seeking variances to four items under 438-86. First is a variance with respect to an increase to the non-residential GFA of the lot. For perspective, it should be noted that we are not seeking a variance to the total GFA of the lot. This is our request to vary the non-residential GFA from 1.5 times to 2.46. The use that we are doing here is a hotel use which is permitted under 438 in the MCR zoning designation. Secondly, receive permission to vary the first floor height from 4.5 metres to 3.5 metres. We note that there is precedence for this variance across the Toronto and East York district. In fact, I can cite two particular cases, specifically at 1598 to 1604 Queen Street East, which was one of our applications, and also in September 2017 to a property at 1679 Bluer Street East, west, which is the southwest corner of Indian Road and Bluer Street West. The third variance is a bylaw requiring a step-back of five metres above the fourth floor. We propose to vary this requirement to 3.5 metres above the fourth floor. I'd like to refer you to, if you choose to review the exhibit list that we submitted, pages four, page seven, and the photograph on page 11. We are seeking this variance to accommodate two key building and Ontario Building Code objectives. Read the configuration of the elevator and the two exit stairs for the purposes of fire safety and egress per the Ontario Building Code, and ensuring that the building depth of 1630 Bluer Street does not impact the east-facing windows from 1638 Bluer Street West on the third and fourth panels of that building. Keep in mind that that 1638 was built to the lot line. Fourthly, require a variance to encroach the building to our west containing windows from the standard of 5.5 metres to 4.24 and 5.31 metres from the side lot line. This condition is related to the six-story element of the proposal. Firstly, the variance is minor. Planning staff in their staff report have noted that, and I quote, "The minimum building setbacks maintain adequate access to light and privacy for the adjacent residents within an urban context," close quote. And we will continue to have conversations and discussions with urban design and planning staff to propose building design measures to mitigate matters addressed by the residents of 1638 Bluer Street West. If I could speak quickly to the staff report of December 4th. Staff are supportive of the proposal. We have been in discussions with staff concerning this particular property for well over a year. In the staff report, it, I quote, "represents an appropriate scale of intensification consistent with the vision and objectives of the Bluer Dundas Avenue study. Furthermore, the proposal diversifies the range of non-residential uses in the area and strengthens the main street function of Bluer Street West. We are prepared to consent to the condition with respect to access to the roof being limited to property maintenance purposes only. No other city departments or agencies have expressed concerns or issues. There have been no letters of objection filed." And in summary, Madam Chair and Committee, we believe that the variances requested are minor and meet the four tests of the Planning Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Rogers. Panel members, do you have any questions before we go to the opposition? No? Okay, thank you. We'll have you back after.
No problem.
You're from the opposition.
Good afternoon. My name is Tony Nathan. I'm a resident at 301 1638 Blower Street West. It's a condo that's on the west side of the building. We, I'm one of the three probably most severely impacted or will be units of the building. I also represent the unit above me, which is probably also one of the three worst-impacted units. Her name is Joanna Newton, unfortunately, she's unable to be here today. The variances you have in front of you are in that form partly because, in fact, this is the August 29 set of variances, they're in that form partly because of my letter to the original set of variances, which are March 27th, and the zoning examiner made certain amendments to his variances. So if you'd like, I do have the emails between the zoning examiner and myself, I could submit it to, if you're interested in that. Of the variances that they should have faced as unit owners in the building is that we were not notified by the city, provided a public hearing notice as well as a list of the variances, until I contacted the city on Monday to get the list of variances. The, apparently the city had sent the public notice to our condo board, which conveniently neglected to pass it on to us. What we did receive from the condo board was a notification on Friday afternoon that there's going to be a meeting at 1:30 December 11th, and that was it. There was no additional information attached. So it's only when I contacted the COA Bram, Bram Bolger, on Friday, on Monday afternoon, that he provided us free information. So I'm somewhat at a disadvantage in terms of preparation, but I have put together some information, which I cobbled together from the information I've been sending to the planning division over the last few months. With that in mind, I'll just very quickly go over the variances that we're concerned about.
Could I just clarify? You live in the condominium that's next door?
I own a unit, I don't live in it. I have tenants in my units, but the.
How many units are there?
In the entire condominium? 108.
Okay, are you speaking for yourself or for the condominium board?
For myself and the unit owner above me, which is unit 401.
And the condo board has not filed any kind of position?
The condo board has not filed a position, as far as I know, but they have been fairly supportive of the developer, yes.
So they support it.
And just to clarify, your unit, are you, where exactly, when we're looking at from Bluer Street?
Yes.
Is it a condo building, and which?
Okay, let's see if I can put something up. Unless, Neil, you have a site plan or a floor plan with you?
Are you like the corner unit?
I'm at a corner unit, the southeast corner unit. I'm the third southeast corner unit. So if.
I think it's the third floor. Third floor?
On the third floor, yes.
We can see it on Google.
Fantastic.
So he's one of the, then. East, north is.
Yes, you've got it. Well, probably is, yes, yes. There is a balcony, but the balcony is facing south, although it does have a view into the.
Here it is here.
Subject building. Okay, so if we are looking at that, my unit would be just about here. And so Joanna's unit would be just one above. So we are looking directly over the, and we have two primary, two windows, bedroom windows, overlooking the subject property. This is a master bedroom window, and the next one would be a, okay, next one would be a primary window for the second bedroom. And those are the only two side, east side windows that we have. So the most impacted units would be the first, units 201, 301, 401, due to the nature of the design of the building. And on the far north side, northeast side, you'll have units 313 and 413 that would be most impacted. So that'll be the units right on the other end.
So I'll give you another minute, sir.
Sure. Okay, with that in mind, the, to go very quickly through the variances, if you look at variance number seven, we have a concern with shadowing. I'm using the old shadow study done 10 years ago for my building.
We don't have a variance number seven.
Oh, sorry, that's, I was using, referring to the zoning notice.
Yeah, we have.
So that's number three, is I believe.
We have four variants.
Okay, so that'd be number three.
Okay.
Yes. That'd be the one for the.
For the six stories and a step back at the.
Exactly, step back at 3.5 as opposed to five.
Okay.
So that's the old shadow study was done. The black dotted line that you see would be my assessment of the length of the shadow, based on the length of the shadow of my building. So it does block, it would block sunlight, natural sunlight into our units. So that would be the concern with that particular variance.
Okay, you have six and a half minutes, so you're going to have to wrap up.
Sure.
In 30 seconds.
The, with respect to the variance number four, the concern we have is the nature of the setbacks being less than 5.5 metres. Because of the north, or rather, the wall that's on our left, which would be the north, the south side wall of this four-story building, it constricts the entire area. So with the extra protrusion that you have in the, in that building, which looks like.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have to cut you off.
All right.
It's your, you're over seven minutes now.
Okay. So I do have information I've put in here, and I'll submit it.
If the members have questions, they'll ask.
Sure, okay.
So you want to submit the, you said you had something else?
Yes.
Okay, the emails, you want to submit those?
Yes, I'll submit those. Fantastic.
Your concerns basically are sunlight and overview.
The protrusion.
And overview.
And overview.
Okay.
So the protrusion would be a setback of this area over here.
Okay, so you want to submit all this?
Yes, as well as the non-residential use, access to non-residential use.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Question I have is, is your building, how, what is your side yard setback from your side property line?
I need you to speak into the mic, because it's on YouTube.
It would be between four to about six, seven inches, depending on where on the side yard line. It should have been set back further back. 10 years ago, that was not done. So number one. Number two, and there were, before the study done for the area, or wall studies done for the area, there was no provision made for a situation in which a side yard setback on the lot line with side windows, what would happen in that case? And I know that in the rest of the avenues, there is a provision, and I think it's number eight D, which deals with this, and that is that the existing building with side windows will not be negatively impacted. Now, that study that was done.
Yeah.
Was done by the same author of the larger study. But for some reason, nothing was put into that study to deal with this issue. Our building 10 years ago was obviously new, but since then, there have been no new buildings, and we have had this condition, the side wall condition, for 10 years, with no provision for what would happen if there was a new building next door. So that was, that's a concern. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Okay, Mr Rogers, we can please speak to the issue raised?
Sure, thank you very much. First of all, we, we had a community meeting, a town hall with, sponsored by the condominium corporation. I would say there were about 50 or 60 unit owners in attendance. This gentleman was, at that time, we advised.
When was that?
That was October 30th.
Thank you.
We had already received notice from the committee that our hearing date would be scheduled for December the 11th. Obviously, the time wasn't, wasn't clear. I made a comment that you may go on to the City of Toronto's application information website, and we'd be happy to, you're free to get information there, and I'm not going to speak to us as to what the condo board's actions were and were not. With respect to the issue of views, we have had three meetings with this gentleman and other representatives of the condominium. We've had three meetings with the condominium corporation, and we have, this plan has evolved over that period of time. Extensive submissions have been made by individuals. I would suggest to you that they are all site plan-related issues. The staff report speaks to that, that they will continue to have dialogue with us. We've accommodated a number of issues with respect to views. In the, in the exhibit list that I provided, one of the solutions to mitigate privacy were architectural fins, metal panels that would be affixed to the outer building wall that would help screen views. With respect to variance number three that my friend spoke to, I just want to have my colleague put up the elevation. And this is the issue of the step-back above the fourth floor. The bylaw requires five metres, we are providing three. And you can just see where we pierced the angular plane right there. This is a very common condition that exists in multiple variances that are heard by this committee across the city of Toronto. And this, in fact, was done, the positioning of this building is sensitive to the fact that if you look at photograph number 11 in the exhibit list, my friend is right. Back in 2010, the Ontario Municipal Board, by way of a settlement, approved a, this 12-story building at zero lot line. And I believe, I wasn't part of the conversations during the Bluer Avenue segment study, that staff somehow probably never considered this site as a redevelopment opportunity. And so it simply fell through the cracks. That's unfortunate, but we are living in an urban condition, and I believe what we have proposed here is reasonable, and staff believe that the proposal also is consistent with an urban, a densely urban setting. Again, with respect to variance number four, the setbacks, it is similar to my previous comments, that these are site plan-related matters. We're actively engaged with planning and urban design staff on these issues, and I'm confident that we will address them. We continue to have conversations and will be prepared to have conversations with the condo board and unit owners to resolve this matter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, panel members? Nope. Okay, we'll take it into committee. Okay, I need any discussion and a motion.
I believe the variances are minor. I believe the variances are minor. I think the issue is that the adjacent 12-story residential building is built right to the lot, side lot line and has put windows along there. Um, and, uh, the proposed building for this site would still be maintaining a side yard setback of over four meters, so there, so that this building would still be providing a setback from the side lot line. So I would, uh, put forward a motion to approve the requested variances subject to community planning, uh, conditions.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the application, including the planning condition in the December 4th report, moved by Mr. Solomon. Do I have a second, or Mr. Nipoll?
Seconded, I agree with my colleague.
Okay.
I, I think it's an unfortunate situation, but, uh, and I wouldn't hold too much hope that site plan control is going to solve the problem, but at least it is one other opportunity to look at it. But I, I think the issue is perhaps more that the condo chose to put, uh, windows on the side of the building when, uh, and, and this proposal actually has a lot line and a, a setback, so I'm supporting the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Your application is approved. Okay, the, I'm going to vet the 230 time slot before we take, um, a five-minute break, so, item number 31, 116 MacPherson Avenue. Applicant, are there any people in opposition to 116 MacPherson? Okay. Item 32, 16 Waller Avenue. Any opposition?
Yes.
Yeah, you're gonna ask for deferral, right?
Correct.
So maybe I'll have you up, uh, do you know if the people are on side, there, the opposition's over there? Have you talked to them?
I'll, 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 you speak to her after.
Can you speak to them during our break?
Sure, you mean, you're deferring to her, huh?
No, no, I'm just vetting, when we come back, we'll do it first if you're in agreement, okay? Okay, item number 33, 262 Caledonia Road. Any opposition to Caledonia? No. Item number 34, 13 Millicent Street. Is there any opposition, and is the applicant here? Okay, item 35, 56 Coleridge Avenue. Any opposition for Coleridge? Item 36, 804 Dover Court Road. Any opposition? Yes. I'm sorry?
Deferral as well.
Okay, um, are you in opposition, or? Can you also go have a conversation, and then we'll deal with the deferral if you're in agreement, okay?
Are, is that the applicant, or is?
She's the applicant, that's opposition. You're the applicant, right?
No.
No. Sorry. Is the applicant here? Okay, you're the applicant. Can you have a conversation with those two people regarding potential deferral? Okay? Um, where am I now? 37 Coleridge? Okay, is there anyone here in opposition to Coleridge?
We have a question. We have a question.
So, can you, we'll stand it down, if you can have a conversation outside the room with the applicant, please. Item number 38, 49 Kerr Road. Is there anyone in opposition for Kerr? Item number 39, 143 Heath Street East. Any, any opposition? Okay, there you go.
Yeah, over there.
If you can also go outside the room and have a conversation, that'd be great. Okay, can you put your hands up again for, for Heath Street? So there's your applicant, if you can step outside and have a conversation. Item number 40, 64 Fairside. Anybody in opposition for Fairside? Item number 41, 783 Salmon Avenue. Anyone in opposition? Okay. Item 42, 130 Amelia Street. Anyone in opposition? Yes? Okay, so are you in opposition? Can you also go and have a conversation, please? Item number 43, 950 Dupont Street. Anyone in opposition for 950 Dupont? Okay, I'm also gonna vet the 330 time slot, since we're running way behind here, so, 97 Yardley Avenue. Is the applicant here? Is there anyone in opposition? Okay, there you go. Also, have a conversation outside the room, please. Item number 45, 81 Oriole Road. And, any opposition? Okay, item number 46, 273 to 275 Vaughan Road. Applicant? Okay. Item number 47, 28-
Is there any opposition?
Yeah, I'm, I'm holding it anyway, the applicant's not here. I haven't seen a hand go up.
They're opposed though, right?
Yeah, you're opposed, so I'll hold it anyway, but it would be nice if you could have a chat with the op, with the applicant, but I don't see a hand going up here. Okay. Item 47, 282 Windermere Avenue. 47, 282 Windermere? I don't have an item 48.
Okay, yes, 282 Windermere, yeah.
Okay, is there anyone, you're asking, is there anybody in opposition? Okay, no opposition, so we're holding, let me go back here. Okay, we're holding 37, 90, uh, 39 Coleridge, 39, 143 Heath Street East, 42, 130 Amelia Street, number 44, 97 Yardley, as well as 46, 273 to 275 Vaughan Road. Okay, we'll be back at 10 after 4.
Are you having fun yet?
Just kidding.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I can take it. I couldn't find the, I just, I know, I'm sure he's, 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 he's part of the cuss, you can't even ask someone to, 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 sort of walk in and over. Thank you.
Well, it's, it's, the thing is, it's the committee member's policy.
You should pay all the fees, so. Thank you.
It's your game, right?
Yeah. You know, like, I, 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 I can't get it all in one.
Did you go downstairs to get provisions?
Yeah, I'm starving.
Did you really?
Well, I just got this, that's all I had. Want me to go get you something? Want something? Seems to me we might need breakfast for meals.
Are, are you, actually, let me pull this up first. 116-
Why does this keep going off? This doesn't go off.
You know, Sylvia, I'm probably gonna bring this to Michael's attention, but the internet, you're, we're constantly losing it, like, constantly, like, like, it doesn't hold, you have to actually disconnect and reconnect constantly to go into Google Maps. Well, you know how you connect on the wifi? Oh, you're on the, you're on the staff one, right? Yeah, this one is horrible. We should go in it.
Also, this dies every time you're not using it. You have to re-sign in. I've had to sign in five times.
If they, if they wanna protect these, these laptops, they should put us on the city network, because, so what happens is this, like, the Google map stays up, right? And then what happens? It's not doing it, you get like, a, a thing here on the internet, and it's gone, and the only way that you can get back in is to disconnect, because it's still showing-
You mean, sign out?
No, it's still showing connected.
Yeah.
Right, so you have to actually disconnect from the wifi and reconnect it, and it's, I've done it at least 10, 10 to 15 times, the whole day. It's constant, it's ridiculous.
And I've had to sign in five times.
Okay. All right, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, we're ready for 116 MacPherson Avenue. So panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, correspondence and support from 111 MacPherson Avenue. We have five form letters in support from MacPherson and Roxborough Addresses, and we have opposition from several addresses on MacPherson. Thank you.
This has changed, right?
Oh, okay, so there is opposition?
No, Madam Chair.
No, okay, I'm, I'm looking there, I'm thinking, I missed the whole.
We, we, we do have a commitment to make sure that we request the plans are substantially in accordance with, so the, the applicant and Mr. Wengel with the neighbors have worked together to, in, um, frankly, a very productive discussion, we thank them for that, to reach the resolution that's on the plans in front of you.
They're reflected on these plans.
They are. I do have to highlight some changes to the notice for the committee, if that's okay? Uh, the floor space index would be reduced, so the variance one, it'd be reduced from 1.14 to 1.0302.
Oh, it's 0.3.
Can we say 1.03 and, and, is that all right, if we round down? Um, variance two-
What about the square meters?
Uh, Mr. Wengel, can you do that?
The hearing's showing the same on here as, as we have in the notice.
Well, it just says one times the area of the lot.
No, but that's not the area of the lot.
Okay, I'll have to go.
You have to, yeah, thanks.
Okay.
We, we will get that and make sure we have it for you. Um, variance two is-
I have a handwritten one.
197, so, sorry, so the, go, the 21735 goes to 197.18 square meters.
Okay.
Thank you. Variance two, uh, it's a minor change, but we should make it. Um, the depth is, is not 16.05, it's actually 16.01, but just to be correct, we should make that change if that's acceptable. The east side yard setback has actually increased slightly, uh, so from .25 to .3, so the wall's further away from the, um, from the property lines, it's a mitigating change, not a, an aggravating change. So variance three, the east side yard setback would no longer be .25, it'd be .3. And then I'm in the committee's hands on variance four, as, as drafted, it's actually missing two words that are in the zoning bylaw, that we would prefer just to have included, just to make it clear in terms of what the zoning provision says. It doesn't change the number of the variances, but I think it just got missed in terms of the zoning examiner translating it over. In the words, in the second line where it says dwelling units in those main walls, between "in" and "those," we should add "one of."
You're deleting "no" as well?
No, the "no" should stay.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sorry, the "no" should stay. So it's where you've got no openings to dwelling units in one of those main walls. So it's, it's the, it's the opposing main walls, where you've got no openings in both, you're at two, when you've got an opening in one, you're at five and a half, when, if you've got an opening in both, you're at 11. In this case, we've got an opening in one. So the, so the way the bylaws say, well, you've got no openings in one of those walls, we've got no openings in one of those walls. So technically should be 5.5, but the variance would change at 1.45.
So, these revisions are to address the concerns that I read for 118 and 120, is that, or?
In particular, yes, and my, and my understanding, I think, is that on that basis, the neighborhood is, is then also satisfied, but, but- But, but I can let the neighbors confirm that for you, Madam Chair. And other than that, I'd be happy to take questions on the plan. Uh, Mr. Wengel, on the site plan on page three, as usual, is included, um, uh, the building, uh, the different floors, the red being what's permitted, the green in terms of what's existing, and I'm happy to walk through it. But I think through the discussions with the neighbor, there's been a good compromise reached.
Could you just show us what you've changed on the plans? Based on, we've got most of this, but what did you change?
So, so one of the changes has been, um, to increase the space that's between 118 and 116. So where there's that, that gap between the facing townhouses, uh, to try and open that up. Uh, Mr. Wengel's just pulling out the balance of the plans. In general, what's happened is things have been carved back. So what Mr. Wengel's done on the plans is marked in blue the area that's been then carved back from the length of the dwellings. And so overall, it's been to reduce the depth or length into the rear yard, um, open up, uh, some of the views that the neighbor had asked to have opened up. And that's, is that the second floor, Mr. Wengel? And then there's the third floor. And then that would...
You were making reference to the site plan, were you not?
I was, in terms of, so, Mr. Wengel, if you go back... So, there, there is, there is a small increase on that, uh, west side for that rear piece. We haven't shown that in blue, sir, but that's opened up slightly that gap. And then the, the bulk of the FSI has come off the end on the second and third floors. And, sir, on the site plan, for example, um, two of the, two of the, I think, sort of interests or issues raised by the neighbor, and again, um, I, I don't want to speak too much for, but one was at the back, pulling back the second floor, uh, so that, uh, the first story addition at the end of 118 can have better views to the east. And that was, that was able to be accommodated. And there's a window then in 118, and the third floor coming back, um, there's an opportunity then to get some more light into that window by pulling the third floor back. So those are two of the interests addressed through the revisions.
You said that you wanted the, you were open to having the plans placed in decision, but I, unless I'm missing it, I don't have floor plans.
I don't think it has to be floor plans, sir, but if it was site plan and elevations?
Floor plans? Okay, so I'm, what is it you're hoping to have attached as condition?
The dimensions of the second and the third.
Okay, we don't have those.
These are the ones they just put up on the board.
They're not in this package, though.
The request is for full plans, sir, that's fine.
Okay, okay, 'cause I didn't have those. Okay, good enough, thanks.
Okay.
So those are the ones you've got? No, we don't.
No, but, but we can tie it as long as you have it.
So there'll be the plans submitted today to us?
Okay, um, can we maybe hear from the opposition?
Absolutely.
Who's now on site, and then if there are any questions, we'll, we'll have...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If you, can you, can you come to the mic if, if... Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. We, um...
I just need your name and...
Oh, sorry, my name's Karen Gorsline, I'm at 118 McPherson. Um, and I'm pleased to be here today to speak to you, um, and also pleased to be supporting, uh, this, uh, particular situation. We did not speak, uh, to the, uh, to the owner and to the application until December the 2nd, so we're very late in the day here. But we're, we had some very productive and constructive discussions at that point, and worked really hard. And together, we were able to find some solutions that would work for both of us. So, um, as a result, I can summarize, uh, some of the things that we were looking for and changed. Uh, the FSI was reduced to 103. The second floor back wall projection, uh, is just, uh, two feet nine inches, and it is, uh, notched in on the side, sort of like a stylized bay window. The third floor back wall, uh, is only an increase of 1.27, and their small deck stays as proposed, so that's a much better situation in terms of light and view. Uh, the chimney, which was an encroachment on the separation, is now within the building, and also, it was, uh, going to be mid-deck on our property, and it's now been brought back in south toward the, uh, toward the front of the building and more aligned to where our chimneys are. And so it's much less intrusive. And the separation, uh, as proposed, is 1.45 without encroachment. And I believe that was also in the, in the previous, uh, earlier plans. I don't think that's a, a new change. The change was it was no longer encroached upon. Um, so those are the reasons why, um, in terms of 118, I'm the adjacent property, uh, we felt that, you know, the applicant had made serious, um, attempts to be sensitive to the context. So looking at both the decrease in the FSI and the, um, way the massing was developed, and how sensitive it was to the impacts on pro, other properties, and also in terms of the pattern of development within the neighborhood, which is very important in our, our street. So I'm in a position now to support this development as long as it is as per the plans, full set of plans and built to the plans. Um, the other thing is, there were other, uh, we have, uh, another neighbor, uh, 120, it is a townhouse, so there's two other townhouse neighbors, and they are now in support as well. Um, and I have been in touch with all, there, there were seven other letters of opposition. I have been in touch with all those neighbors, and I have emails from them saying that based on the changes, they no longer are in opposition, and I'd be happy to file those if you wish.
Okay.
Would you like that?
Sure.
Okay.
Panel members, do you have any questions of the speaker?
No.
No? Okay, I'll just take the letters if you have them handy.
I don't have a letter from me or 120, but these are the other people who are expressed...
No worries, you're on record as having spoken. Okay. Uh, Mr. Bronskele, I'm not sure there's anything to add right now. Um, panel members, do you have any questions?
No.
No? Okay. So we'll take it into committee.
Sylvia, again.
Okay. You have it?
Okay, I don't have any questions, but I'm, unless anybody else does, I'm prepared to bring a motion forward um, on the application as amended, uh, with the changes that were just outlined. I'd like to bring a motion forward for approval. It's nice to see neighbors work together to try to resolve issues. In this case, I think the, the amended application fits within the context of the neighborhood and meets the four tests, so my motion's for approval and is going to be subject to it being built substantially in accordance with the plans that were filed, showing the reductions. I don't know what the numbers of the plans are, but the plans that just referred to.
Okay. Motion, motion to approve the application, um, as amended, um, and tying it to the plans submitted to the committee today, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Nipfel, all in favor? The application's approved. Okay, Mr. Barrett, my apologies, I should've had you up first, but it's been a long day. All right, so did you, do the, uh, opposition agree to the deferral? Are they still...
Uh, yeah, we're, we're in favor. That was also the adjacent neighbor and, um, a few others have written in who I've tried to reach out to. So, deferral is certainly in order to address some of these concerns and revisit this, uh, in the new year once we've had a chance to compromise.
Okay, and you're in agreement, ma'am? Um, sure, very briefly. Uh, if I can have you come up to the mic?
Yeah. Uh, my name is...
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Veronica Nguyen, I'm the president of the Swansea Area Ray Pairs Association, and it, this just came to our attention yesterday, and we, at the, our executive meeting last night, we, uh, we, we found this to be excessive, and we read the objection letters of the neighborhood, so we haven't been in touch with them, so, uh, we are glad to be able to, that there is going to be a deferral, and we would, we have, I have worked with, with the applicant here to say that, uh, he will meet with us, the agreement on condition that he would come to talk to us and include us as part of the discussion, 'cause we consider this to be a, a duplex rather than a residential home, and so we would advise on the proper zoning to go through. So, if that's okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move a deferral, um, of this application to allow the applicant to negotiate with the neighbors and then return with perhaps some compromise.
I have a motion to defer, moved by Mr. Nipfel, seconded by Mr. Solomon, all in favor? Okay. And that's including recirculation fees?
Sure. Thank you very much, happy holidays.
Thank you, same to you. And now, 804 Dover Court, item 36, um, to the deferral request only. So, uh, is there an agreement on a deferral? If not, you'll go back in the hold queue.
Madam Chair, members of committee, good afternoon. My name is John Owen, acting as agent on behalf of the Del Monte family. We have met briefly with the neighbors, and it's agreed to have a deferral. That's, uh, in keeping with your wishes. And, uh, we're looking for, I believe, it's a time that's after the new year, and perhaps the, sometime in March, if that's convenient.
Um, Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, it's, um, one maximum of three to six months, so I don't know if you can accommodate March or not. Yeah, so when you come back and with whatever revisions possibly, or whatever you're coming back with, then talk to staff about potentially getting a date in March.
Okay. Will there be a timeframe then, established now, or...
Well, the timeframe is, is three to six months, right?
It depends when you have something that we can look at.
So I'll contact the committee adjustment?
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, and you're the opposition, and you're in agreement with the deferral, you as well?
Can we request that the tenants of the building get notification?
Um, well, the city has a set notification area, so if there are people that you feel you want included in this, then you should approach them yourself, yeah.
Your tenants of 804 Dover Court?
Yeah, we own, the city notifies the, uh, the building, the, the owner. So if you want to get other tenants involved, and assuming the applicant is having a meeting, you should work together and you should be approaching the tenants or throw a flyer or something in the, in the door.
So, three, six months?
I'm sorry, three to six months. Okay, but coordinate with the applicant. All right, do, can I have a motion to the deferral?
I can bring a motion forward for deferral with the required fees, circulation fee.
Okay. Motion to defer, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Nipfel, all in favor? And that's including fees, recirculation fees. Okay. Item number 33, 262 Caledonia Road. Okay, panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, and no additional correspondence. I just need your name.
Uh, my name is Murray Fern, I'm representing the owners of, uh, 262 Caledonia Road.
Okay, panel, um, can I have you folks please, um, discuss outside the room? Panel members, do you need a presentation? Can we go straight to questions?
I just have a question.
Okay, one question, Mr. Nipfel.
Have you had any discussions with the planning department about this application?
Uh, yes, we did. I had a discussion with the planning department, and they indicated to us that they would like us to, uh, do some planting along the north wall of the, um, retaining wall that goes to the basement, which, uh, is shown on the plan there, on the application.
So, subject to that, they're not objecting to you having a...
No, not at all. That was the only conversation I had, and we showed that, and, uh, that was the... We've, we've indicated planting on our, uh, site plan.
Any other questions?
Yeah, are there other walkouts in the area?
It's funny you should ask that. Uh, there are quite a few. The owners took a walk around there, and there's like over 50...
Oh, okay.
...other houses with walkouts.
It's probably a planning, it's no problem. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, we'll take it into committee. Comments, a motion?
That's what I'm wondering, is this, is this the planting that they talked about? Well, it doesn't screen it from the street, though.
No, they weren't concerned about, sorry, screening from the street. She was just concerned about, uh, screening from the neighbor to the north.
Okay, and that's the planting that you've got on your...
Yes, yes.
How high is that planting?
Well, um, at this point, I don't know, but we can, I know, like, right now, there is, there is planting along that side. I, I have a picture that I can show.
Oh, it's okay, I just, like, my calling, I'm trying to figure out if we should make it subject to this drawing, but the drawing doesn't really say, um... No.
There's nothing on this.
I can't... Yeah, so they're, they're three feet high.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
All right, we're back in committee? Comments and/or a motion?
Well, Madam Chairman, it doesn't sound like there's, from my perspective, a need to put in the planting as a condition, because it's already there, um, and he's not going to take it out. Um, so I would recommend, or I'd like to bring forward a motion of approval, uh, without condition.
Okay, motion to approve the application, moved by Mr. Nipfel, seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor? The application's approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Item number 34, 13 Millicent Street. Yes. I, hang on, item 37?
Colridge.
Okay. Um, we have before us, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, and no other correspondence. Just need your name.
Michael Scott, agent for the owner.
Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation? Can we go straight to questions? No questions? Okay, we'll take it into committee then.
I am prepared to bring a motion for approval on this. I'm, in terms of, I agree with the plans, um, it looks like the addition is similar in depth to adjacent neighbors. Uh, I feel that there's no adverse impact, so my motion is for approval, without any conditions.
Okay, motion to approve, moved by Ms. Valentini, do I have a second or Mr. Solomon? All in favor? Your application's approved.
Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 35, 56 Colridge Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a plan showing the streetscape of Colridge, covering letter from Shenmei Liu, the applicant. We have reports from community planning, tree protection and plan review, plus 12 form letters in support. And if I could have your name?
Yeah, this is, uh, Gabriel Guiducci, I'm the agent.
Okay. Panel, panel members, do you need a presentation, or can we go to questions? No presentation? All right, any questions? You're aware...
There's a, sorry.
No, I was just gonna ask if you're aware of the planning report?
Uh, yes, we are.
You're okay with that?
Uh, I'm okay with the condition, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chairman, there was good streetscape analysis included with this application, which made its valuation much easier, thank you. Um, and it appears that there's been some discussion with planning. I'd like to, uh, bring forward a motion of approval, subject to forestry condition number three, and the, um, aforementioned planning condition, which is to basically, um, um, construct the dwelling substantially in accordance with the plans that are on file with us.
Okay, motion to approve with the conditions outlined by Mr. Nipfel, do I have a second or... Seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you, committee, chair.
Did I say forestry condition number three?
Yeah, you did. Item number 36, 804 Dover Court Road was deferred. And we'll go to item number 37, which is 39 Colridge Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor, floor plans and elevations, and no further correspondence. Could I have your name, please?
This is Paris La Mirio, I'm the architect on the file.
Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation? Can we go to questions? No?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, I note that there are many two-story houses on the street, including one on the abutting side, so I do believe that this is compatible with what is the character of the area and that the variances are minor. I would forward a motion to approve the requested variances and there is no conditions.
I would second the motion.
Okay, motion to approve, moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you.
Item number 38, 49 Kerr Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevations, planning rationale from Jeffrey Moot, staff report from tree protection and plan review, as well as five form letters in support from residents on Kerr Road. Hi, can we have your name, please?
Jeffrey Moot, Principal Moot Architect, the agent on behalf of the owner.
Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation? No? Do you have any questions? No?
Madam Chairman, if there are no questions, I'd like to bring forward a motion of approval, subject to forestry condition number one. I think this is a very minor application and quickly meets the test for variance.
Okay, motion to approve, moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Ms. Valentini. All in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 39 is held. Item number 40, 64 Fair Side Avenue.
Good afternoon, my name's Steve Ellis, I'm co-agent with Amanda Tran, co-agent.
Yeah, hang on one second. Okay, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have 15 photographs of similar minor variances in the neighborhood. We have a staff report from community planning and, which is asking that the lot coverage of the proposed new dwelling exclusive of accessory structures shall be limited to 35.4%. We have support from three people, one on Coxwell, two on Fair Side, and we have opposition from 61 and 63, 63 Fair Side, so, sorry. Can I have your name again?
Yes, it's Steve Ellis, a co-agent for the owner, and this is Amanda Tran, who's a co-agent, also an owner of the property.
Okay. Panel members, do you need a presentation or can we go to questions? And you're aware of the planning condition and you're okay with it, right?
Well.
Well, I just read it. So it's basically the lot coverage of the proposed new dwelling exclusive of the accessory structures shall be limited to 35.4%.
Not sure if that, if the building can be constructed in that, within that framework, yes, we're in favor of it, but I'm not.
Well, I'm assuming that like the lot coverage variance includes the garage, so they've taken the actual coverage for the house and calculated it at that.
You were requesting 43%.
Yes.
Which included the ancillary building.
That's right.
If you took the ancillary building off, what would you have?
I believe it'd be, it'd probably fit within the framework that planning suggested.
Right, that's how they've.
They just don't want the garage, basically.
Yeah, that's all they're saying, that you can't go bigger on the house.
Yes.
In other words, yeah, you can't go 43% on the house, is what they're saying.
Exactly, yes, we're completely agreeing with that, yes. That's very reasonable and practical.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Prepared to make a motion. I'm prepared to make a motion for approval of the application. I think in my view, it meets the four tests and it's going to be subject to the conditions that we just discussed set out in the planning memo.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve with the planning conditions, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? Your application's approved. Item number 41. Okay, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have a covering letter from James and Shawna Owen, the applicants, and we have support, actually eight form letters in support from residents on Salmon and Woodmount Avenue, as well as 300 Queensdale Avenue. So if we can have your name, please?
James Owen, applicant and owner.
Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation or can we go straight to questions?
Okay.
I'm good, yeah, I was just refreshing remembering the lot coverage, but it's already substantial.
I have some comments. I note that there are many two-story houses on the street. Many of the variances are for the existing condition and thus aren't for the new development. And so I believe that the requested variances are minor and I would move approval of the variances with no conditions.
I would second the motion. I also would note that you've got support from the neighbors on either side of you.
Okay, have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? Application's approved.
Thanks very much.
Two, 30 times slot?
Yeah.
Based on this, okay.
Yeah, item 42 is held. Item 43 is 950 Dupont Street.
Came in the package.
Okay, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey site plans and floor plans, two photographs of the subject property, covering letter from David Riley, the agent, copies of previous C of A decisions affecting the property. We have staff report from the acting manager, traffic planning and transportation services. If we can have your name, please?
Yes, my name is David Riley, I'm the agent.
Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation or do you want to go to questions?
Madam Chairman, I would appreciate some discussion of the parking. I don't understand it because numbers, there's a chart in there that has one set of numbers and then the covering letter includes another set of numbers and I'm a bit confused.
I'll help straighten that out. Actually, and I have a couple handouts, I might as well just do that now. One of them is a letter basically in response to transportation services comments, which we say that we accept their proposed recommended approval and their condition. And it also attaches a review of a property that's very nearby on the screen there. On the left side of the screen is 1020 Dupont, which is located about 75 meters to the west of the subject property. This was one of the properties that we identified, and I'll get into the reason why, to accommodate off-site parking. And we have a confirmation now from zoning that there is a surplus of parking there and there will be an ability to accommodate parking there.
Okay.
So I have a letter here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just while I'm handing stuff out, I also have a letter from Counselor Bylaw's office, just, which says that she supports the application, which I'll also hand.
Thank you.
So.
Just to clarify, so.
Yes.
To make best use of the time, my concern had to do with whether there's 16 or 17 spaces and how they're allocated, because those two numbers are, I don't know where that came from.
Yes, so on the, on the plans itself, there's a parking chart. The parking chart says that 16 spaces are required for the artist studio use. However, according to the zoning examiner, 17 spaces are required. So the zoning, the public hearing notice and the requested variance is actually for a reduction to, for the artist studio use from 17 spaces to two spaces to be provided on site.
It's based on the zoning examiner's numbers.
It's based on the zoning examiner's numbers, yes. And so essentially what we have here, we have a building which takes up basically the entire property. So you can see the yellow identified lands, which are to the right of the building, that's essentially, those are the adjacent property to the east. So the entire building essentially takes up the whole property. We have eight existing parking spots on the property. They're located where you see this, my thumb is. Six of those eight are required for the existing uses in the building. So this is why we have two, and the existing uses are manufacturing and showroom use for a furniture showroom essentially. So we have two essentially surplus parking spaces on the property. There's no physical space to provide for any additional parking spaces on the property, and so that's why the requested variance. When we were putting this application forward, and, which is for an artist studio use, which is in the portion of the building that you see right here, where my thumb is, this is essentially what the interior of the building looks like. So it's a very tall space, artist studio use, actually for the digital projection of art. So the zoning examiner has said that this is an artist studio as opposed to an artist gallery. I will show you exactly what is proposed here and I have a photo somewhere. Here we go. So you may have seen this on the news from an exhibit that just opened in Montreal. It's the Imagine Van Gogh exhibit. So this is what is proposed exactly for this, for this property. So it's something that you need, very tall buildings, it needs to be in an industrial space, lots of height. As you can see there, the height of the projections in relation to the people. Because it, an artist studio use, it's a parking rate of one to, 1.5 per 100 square meters, which is actually more parking required than an art, an art gallery, if you're wondering. That's a 1.3 per 100 square meters use. So in terms of what's required here, that comparison's very similar, but if it was an art gallery, we'd actually require fewer spaces. But we wanted to say, okay, we can't physically provide for space on the property itself, but are there opportunities nearby to provide for off-site parking? So we identified two properties. One of them, which is 1020 Dupont, which is located 75 meters to the west, is actually owned by the same building owner at 950 Dupont. 1020 Dupont has, I believe, 27 parking spaces and 16 of those parking spaces are surplus. So essentially, the existing use of 1020 Dupont requires, I'm going to do the math in my head, 11 parking spaces, but 16 additional parking spaces exist there. So the city's transportation department had recommended that within 300 meters, you provide for those additional 15 spaces that are needed somewhere. And they need to be within the 300 meter radius of the site. Here, we have a good example of a property that happens to be owned by the same owner, where all of those spaces can be provided and only 75 meters away. And so this was a good, a good opportunity to say, this is where the parking can be provided. Additionally, the owner next door, which is why that property is highlighted, which is a self-storage facility with parking on both the east and the west sides of the self-storage building. The western parking lot was identified as having also potential ability to accommodate some parking, but we haven't heard specifically how many spots could be accommodated there, so I haven't addressed those. But I just wanted to bring to the committee's attention in the letter that I handed out to you, that the zoning examiner just yesterday has confirmed that there are 16 surplus parking spaces there, and so we should be able to satisfy the city's condition. And we accept the city's, the recommended condition to be attached to this decision because there is also some other elements, including having a lease sign to ensure that the city is satisfied that parking can actually be provided on that property. In my planning letter that I submitted, I also indicated proximity to transit. It's about, probably about a 10 to 12 minute walk from Ozzington subway station, but there's also several bus routes here. I think, in my opinion, this is a really good site to have this use. There aren't too many areas that are these industrial buildings that are so well-served by transit, where you'd be able to provide this use. So in my opinion, I think it's, it's appropriate. And given that we can provide for parking very nearby, I believe that the intent of the bylaw is satisfied, particularly on a site where.
We're at eight and a half minutes, so.
No problem.
I can get you to, I think.
Yeah, I think I'm wrapped up.
I think we get the gist.
Yep.
You want us to support it because you think it's appropriate.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay, panel members, do you have any other questions? Okay, so we'll take it into committee for a decision.
I'm satisfied that variance is in question, meet the test, the four tests for minor variance. In particular, I am happy to support a motion for approval. You've demonstrated that the parking is not an issue because there is, it is imposed proximity to transit, and in fact, that you're prepared to comply with the requirement of transportation services in terms of providing off-site parking within 300 meters. So my motion's for approval, subject to the recommendation or the conditions set out in the transportation services memo.
Okay, motion to approve, including.
Second the motion.
The transportation condition, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor?
Thank you for the initiative and solving the problem. It's good.
Thank you very much.
Yes?
I did, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
The off-site parking. Okay.
Oh, do we need to say that?
No, no, that, they would work that out if they can't, if they can't.
If we recommend the condition that.
Right, we did the off-site parking, that's all we did.
Okay. I don't think you need it, you solved the problem.
Well, they've already solved it, 75 meter proximity.
That was, that was if they hadn't solved it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Item number 39, 143 Heath Street.
Madam Chairman, we are still in the process.
You're still discussing?
Discussing and trying to come up with a solution.
No problem, we'll go to 40, let us know when you're ready, okay? We'll go to 42.
We may be right at the end.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so let's go to item number 42, 130 Amelia Street. If I can have the opposition sit on the side here. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from Leo Mielas, the agent, email correspondence from the assistant planner of community planning, as well as Heritage Preservation Services. We have correspondence in opposition from 126 and 128 Amelia Street. What happened to your opposition?
Good afternoon, I believe one member of the opposition is, is here. The other.
Can you come and sit up at the front?
The other, I believe, is satisfied with the conditions based on a conversation with the owner. Lillian, I believe is her name, and she's not here.
Okay, ma'am, are you still opposed? Are you still opposed to the, you are, so you'll be speaking. Okay, so can we have a brief presentation, please?
Yes, of course.
And you're Stephen Flaming?
No.
No, what's your name?
My name is Leo Mielas, I'm the architect and representative for Stephen and Andrea Flaming.
Okay.
So I'd just like to briefly describe the project. It's a two-story addition at the back of 130 Amelia Street, three-bedroom house in total. And the addition is as wide as the existing condition and, or it's proposed, the proposed addition is as wide as the existing house, and the proposed depth is as deep as the existing house to the east, which is 132 Amelia Street. And the picture I have up is from the sidewalk. It's a historical property, I believe it's from 1879, and we are not modifying the front of the house at all. We are leaving it as it is, with the addition entirely at the back. And we have Toronto Heritage Preservation Services on side with our proposal. I'd just like to switch images. It's a two-story addition at the back of 130 Amelia Street, three-bedroom house in total. And the addition is as wide as the existing condition, or it's proposed, the proposed addition is as wide as the existing house, and the proposed depth is as deep as the existing house to the east, which is 132 Amelia Street. And the picture I have up is from the sidewalk. It's a historical property. I believe it's from 1879, and we are not modifying the front of the house at all. We are leaving it as it is, with the addition entirely at the back. And we have Toronto Heritage Preservation Services on side with our proposal. I'd just like to switch images. That is an image of the back of the property. And I'd just like to mention a little bit about the family. They've recently moved into the neighborhood. They're a young family with two young kids, four years old, four months old, and their existing two-bedroom house isn't really adequate for their needs, so they need to expand for a growing family. Now, the existing context is, of course, Cabbage Town. It is an old neighborhood. And if I can point out, in the picture, towards the left is 132 Amelia Street, and the wall, I'll just point to it. Right here. That is the proposed depth of the addition. So it'll be as long as the next-door neighbor, and there are other houses along the street that have created depths, or similar depths. I would like to go through the four tests, if I may, quickly, in relation to the proposal. And if I can just bring up, forgive me, the drawings. So- Yes? Correct, that is 128. And there is, there is a gap, you can see the gap between the two houses. So are the variances minor? Now, the changes proposed seek to build an addition that extends the existing width, as I mentioned, which does not trigger a variance, I would like to add, and to match the building depth of the existing house. And hence, in the context of the immediate neighborhood, it is minor, as it is reflective of the existing environment. If I can speak to the appropriateness, is it appropriate for the development of the site? Test number two, we are maintaining the use as a single-family dwelling, and then therefore it's consistent with the neighborhood's designation. Test number three, is the variance within the intent of the official plan? And just to quote from the official plan, that "physical changes must be sensitive, gradual, and generally fit the existing physical character." And hence, because it's following these general physical patterns, we believe it's appropriate for the context and for the street. Test number four, is the variance within the intent of the zoning bylaw? And the variances requested are within the intent of the one-time density designation. We're actually a little under. I believe we're at .93. So by virtue of expanding on two stories, the existing width into the neighboring depth, we are not triggering the setback, we're not triggering the density, just the two variances. And if I could end with one comment about the variance requesting the downspouts, I'll just show the site plan. Now, I'll just point, here is the existing facade, the existing depth of the neighborhood at 132. There is a little indent here, where we're setting back the second floor. The importance of that little setback on the second floor is such that it provides light for the existing bedroom, because otherwise, without a window, you couldn't call a bedroom a bedroom. So it brings in light towards one of the existing bedrooms. We can have small windows at the washrooms, and there's also a skylight going down into the kitchen. So that little inset is doing a lot of work for us, but we need to shed the water from that roof, and hence, the downspout, that I should point out is finding its way towards the front and turning into the property. So the water goes, you know, lands-
Ask you to wrap up. You're at six and a half minutes.
My apologies. If I can make one final comment, and it's regarding the dialogue that's taken place with the neighbor, and I know that she will make some comments. But my understanding is that the owners, Stephen Flaming in particular, did have a dialogue back in August regarding this proposal, and in fact, it's a bit of an aside, at an earlier stage, we had a third story, and because there was resistance, we completely got rid of it. And so that was a very early part of the design. We are not requesting that.
Okay, we'll have you back after the neighbor states her concern.
Okay, great, thanks. If it is more appropriate for the owner to speak?
No, it's like five minutes, and you're at over seven, so that's for one or two people, like for-
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, yes, you're up. No problem. Why don't you put it on the overhead if you need help? The staff can help you.
Or ask the applicant, he knows how to do it, too.
Or the- Just lay it on top. Turn it. Yeah, that's it. Perfect.
You're on camera.
Yeah, so we just need your name and address before you-
Sure, I'm Suzanne Hudson. I live at 128 Amelia.
Okay.
And I have lived in Cabbage Town for 20 years. I've got a family history of many of us living in Cabbage Town, and I've lived in this particular house for 12 years. And my new neighbors, who I was very mad, happy, I should say now mad, happy to meet, they moved in in November of last year. So in the summer, Stephen, who I know, I don't really know his wife, mentioned to me that they were thinking of doing an addition, and he quickly showed me, he had his little four-year-old with him, the addition. And in this part of Cabbage Town, Amelia is the nicest street. It's mostly composed of small semis and cottages. So when he showed me his plans, the only thing I saw was the third-floor addition, which had a deck and would overlook my property. So I said, oh, I'm not crazy about that. So he said, not to worry, I just wanted to know what you thought. I'll take it back to the architect, it's going to come off. So when this happened in November, I was completely taken aback. I didn't know that he was proceeding with a plan for an addition. He went away on holidays with his wife for three weeks, and the first I knew was when I got the package from the committee of adjustments. So, I'm not a lawyer, I hired an architect, and she took me through the plans. And she had many concerns. She said, especially between, the property is so narrow there, and where are they going to excavate? It looks like they're going to excavate, actually, they're going to excavate within two feet of that particular structure there that you can see. Now, I didn't put that on, it was put on years ago, but it's enclosed stairs to my basement, and there's a foundation wall from the main foundation on the one side. On the other side is the foundation for my kitchen and my family room. So I think that's awfully close, so she was concerned about that. And I had some, we had questions, lots of questions. And between November 18th and December the 9th, we sent five emails to the owner and his architect, asking questions, and they did not respond to one. So initially, I thought, well, I guess I can accept the proposal for the depth exception, for it to be 19 versus 17, because gee, they've got two kids, and they should have an addition. I'm all for that. But then I had questions. Is it going to go right to my fence? I have a young dog, and I walk him up this laneway all the time, and also take my garbage bins out. I had lots of questions. No answers came back. So the first one, on November 27th, I said I agreed to the variance one about the depth. And obviously, I agreed also to the variance two about the downspouts. Actually, at the time, I didn't know that it was all the water that's going to come from the roof, but I understand from the architect that that rainwater has to go onto their property, not mine, and that's a bylaw. So that's why I accepted that one. But then, when we hadn't heard from them, sort of weeks later, I thought, gee, I'm really nervous now that they're going right to my property line. I have no idea what they're doing. So I'm going to accept the depth with the condition of a 1.5-foot setback, which I understand is very common. And once again, I heard nothing back. So I also have two other concerns about, and this is all setback-related, so maybe that's not concerned here, or of concern here. But also, if they also were able to do right up to my property line, we have, I have a very narrow, we all, ours, our lots are only 15 feet wide. It would be an 18-foot-high wall, brick wall, overlooking my garden, which would completely shut out any of the sunshine to that small garden. And, oh, the other thing, too, well, I guess it was this, of the excavation. I'm very worried about that. I called a lawyer, and he said to me, oh, they're definitely going to crack your foundation. So I'm very concerned about that. So I think I have to stick with my original, or my resubmission, which is, the variance is fine, the two variances are fine with me, but the first variance about the coverage is conditional on a 1.5-foot setback. I think I have to have that.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
Is this your property line?
This, well-
This is your stair.
Yeah, you see that-
Is that your property line there?
Well, this is the walkway.
Yeah. Is that right away, or is it all on your property?
It's half a foot on his property on that side. We see where I say half? And then it's 1.75 on my side, so it's almost two feet on my side, and it's half a foot on his side. No, his property line, see where I've got the black line coming down? That's his property line. And then my property line is that one. But see- Yeah, yeah. And it looks wide, but it's only 24 and a half inches across. The whole thing, where across is only 24 and a half inches. Pardon me? Well, I'm saying, he owns six inches, and I own almost two, two. Yeah. But my concern there is, when they talk about a variance of seven inches, which is what they're proposing, is they're then going to be within two, within two feet of that structure, which has foundation wall.
There is no variance for the structure, it's just for the-
No, 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 I'm saying-
For the downspouts. There's no variance for coming any closer on the side lot line.
Well, because the, that-
No, there is no variance for the structure to come closer. It's only the downspouts and the depth.
And the depth.
That's it. There's nothing else here.
So I'm saying I have problems with the depth irrespective of everything.
Okay, so you don't support the variances?
I don't.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, panel members?
Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mielis, if you can speak to some of the concerns expressed as related to the variances before us.
Yes, can I speak from this mic?
Sure. As long as it's on, is the red light on?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Just very roughly, I'll attempt to, apologies, very roughly, I will attempt to show where the property line is. It's somewhere in between with my clients having a little less of the laneway and 128 having a little more. And so our setback of the west facade is noted at 186 millimeters, or 19 centimeters to round off. And so we are mindful that the shoring, excavation, and underpinning will need to take place within the boundaries of my client's property, as well as we will engage a structural engineer, without question, in order to come up with the optimal design. And so notwithstanding the technical solution, it doesn't change the setback that we are proposing, which is the exact width of the existing building. Correct, correct. We're just extending the existing house. If I can speak to the question of light, I would suggest that two-story buildings are commonplace in the downtown core, and also on the street, and this immediate area, and that by virtue of not asking for any additional height that we're allowed, and by the fact that we're matching the neighbor's depth, we don't see a significant issue, and find it in keeping with the acceptable notion of minor variance.
I noticed there's a lot of additions varying in depth and proximity, so would you say that your variance number two is pretty much happening throughout the neighborhood in terms of proximity with the additions? Because when I look at the aerial view here on Google Maps, there are a lot of additions on this street varying in depth and height. Okay, I, yeah, you're not, sorry.
What I've put up on the screen is an aerial photograph taken from the city of Toronto zoning-
Okay.
-which has the helpful feature where you can toggle towards the aerial view. This is a little superior to Google, because it's taken in winter, so it doesn't show all the trees. But you can see 130 here. There's several properties around here that are quite deep, and it looks to me like we're simply proposing what others have done before us. I can bring that closer to you if you want, the resolution wasn't great.
It's okay. We have the Google Maps up, so it's pretty much the same. Okay, any other questions, panel members? Okay, we'll bring it into committee. Any comments and/or a motion?
I'll make comments. I'm sympathetic to the neighbor's concerns in terms of setback from the property line. We don't have a variance in this case for setback from the property line. You indicated you'd wished it to be 1.5 meters from the property line where the addition is, but, sorry about that. I know you've indicated you had concerns about the setback of the proposed addition to the property line and to your property line. When I look at the variances before us, we do not have a variance for setback for the proposed addition from the property line. So I feel like my hands are tied in terms of that. The variances we do have are simply for building depth, notwithstanding the variance for the downspout. And often, we see many other variances combined with that. We don't have a variance for floor space index that it's going over, you know, we don't have height variances. We do have the depth variance, but in my view, that matches what is going on in the surrounding neighborhood, particularly the attached house at 132. This applicant is simply seeking to match what the attached neighbor is doing. So in my view, I feel that this proposal is in keeping with what's going on, and it meets the four tests. I don't know if my colleagues have any other comments?
Anything to add, or are we okay for motion?
I would concur with those comments, and so I would like to bring forward a motion to approve the requested variances. to approve the requested variances.
I agree with my colleagues. I think the issue that the objector has has to do with construction. The applicant has indicated an intention of hiring a professional to supervise that construction. Oh, sorry, that's, no, it's on. I have sympathy with your concern, but as indicated, and I agree with my colleagues, what we have before us are variances that don't deal with side yard setback. So we're not dealing with that. The applicant has indicated an intention to hire a professional to supervise and make recommendations about how excavation is undertaken, so that the concerns that you've raised about disruption of your foundation and drainage, in fact, won't occur. Those would have to be private arrangements, I think. Under the circumstances, the applicant has done virtually everything he can do within the confines of his site to address your concerns, and by removing the previous third floor, I think he over, he responded to your concern about light and so forth. So I'm prepared to support the motion as well. I do think that the issue that you have, which is a valid one, is something you would be able to negotiate with the applicant and a consultant that would be brought in to deal with that specific issue.
I'm sorry, yeah, we're in committee, sorry. I have a motion to approve the application moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? Okay, the application's been approved. Now, I'm not sure if you filled in what's called a decision request card. Maybe the staff can show you where to, I don't know, is there any at the end there?
I think there are some-
Yeah. If you fill that in, then you'll be notified of the decision by, if you have email, make sure you put the email address on. Or he's, the applicant's going to give you, give you one right there, okay? And if you have other questions, you need to speak to staff, okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 45, 44 is held, 97 Yardley, so we'll go to 81 Oriole Road. We have before us a copy of the draft plan of survey, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevation, staff report from development engineering, as well as tree protection and plan review, and we have an information report from Bell Canada. Can I have your name, please?
Good afternoon, Ali Shakiri, 326 Shepherd Avenue East.
Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation? Can we go straight to questions?
I would prefer, or I would suggest that we need some kind of lot analysis. We need your understanding of what the lots are like in the area to determine if these lots that you're proposing are in keeping with the general intent and character of the neighborhood.
Sure.
We normally need what's called a lot analysis, which is how these lots compare to the lots in the area. We don't have that. Can you provide that sort of information for us?
I don't have that analysis, but the planning department actually reviewed the case. They had comments about some of the variances that we modified, since originally we applied for this.
That's once, that's once the consent's been given. My question has to do whether, whether the lots that you're proposing are-
Sure, I can, I can give you a presentation for that.
-keeping with the character of the area.
Sure.
I think also what my colleague is saying, Mr. Shakiri, since you appear before us regularly in future, if you do have a severance, it would be nice if you gave us examples on the street and-
Of course.
-very close proximity of lots that are-
Sure.
-the same size or close to the same size.
Indeed, I can do that, right? With your permission, I'm going to provide you with some supplementary information. I'm going to refer to this site plan, the location map provided by the planning department. The subject lot is the one that you see outlined here. And right to our north side, there are number 83 and 85, Oriole Road. They are identical to the size that we're proposing here, so that is a lot, that is 50-foot frontage divided to two. Immediately north of that, these are all townhomes, so the lot size for those are smaller than this. Immediately to our south side is an apartment building, multi-unit, so the lot frontage does not apply to that because they're like, I think 12 units or something. Immediately in front of how are us, there are two tower buildings, residential, I believe they're 18 floors or so. And to this side, these are, again, townhomes. So we have provided you with some examples of other applications in the same road, Oriole, as you, those are as you basically go south on Oriole Road. So there are precedents of the bigger lots being severed, and there are also examples of the floor spaces for those, if you're interested to see. So I just wanted to tell you that we've done our homework, but since we're in touch with the planning and they seem to be okay with the severance, it-
All of the townhouses are narrower than what you're asking for, or about the same size?
Yes.
Narrower?
Yes, they are narrower. There are, I can-
Across the road and around the corner. So in effect, your proposed lot frontages are consistent with that area?
Yes. Basically, the other ones are actually narrower, but initially we were, we had planned to basically have two detached homes, but the planning said we are not going to, they were not going to support that. They were supporting something similar to the other concept, so this is a semi-detached, same as the one to our north side, same as the townhouses that are attached. So they weren't willing to support any standalone house in that context, so we had to just put forward something that is completely cohesive with what's happening in that particular area.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, so we'll take it into committee. Well, I can break the silence for the first one today.
No, go ahead.
So I visited this site, and I'm very familiar with the area, and I would agree with the comments made by Mr. Shakiri. The house next door is almost identical. You've got the apartments and condos that are on Avenue Road that are in fact towering over this entire neighborhood. So I think what's being proposed makes perfect sense in this area.
I would concur with those comments, and just to add that the additional information that you gave us is very helpful because it does show us the, what is happening along the street in terms of lot sizes and-
Glad to hear that, sir.
Okay, so is anyone ready for a motion?
I'm prepared to bring forward a motion of approval on the consent application, subject to the normal development engineering consent conditions. I will thank the applicant for that information. That's the type of information that we really need to make a knowledgeable consent decision. I also don't have any difficulties with the variances that are before us. I think they're reasonable, given that light, that site configuration, so I would move approval of the variances as well. I unfortunately don't have the forestry conditions for the variances.
I don't have, there's no forestry.
They're just advisory. Okay, so then it's with-
Standard engineering and consent conditions.
Okay, then, subject to that, I'm prepared to move those motions.
Okay, do I have a second or? Okay, motion to approve, including engineering and standard consent conditions, moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Solomon. All in favor? The application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 47, 282 Windermere. We have before us copy of the minutes from the September 26 public hearing. We have a copy of the survey revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from Stephen Chee, the agent, and one form letter in support by 280 Windermere. We can have your name, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of committee. My name is TJ Sekura. I am a planner and principal of Design Plan Services. Just to note, the letter you received from Stephen Chee, that's a planner in my office, so that letter's from my office.
Okay. So I'm not sure we need a presentation. I'll just ask my colleagues here. Do you want to, no? Okay, do you have any questions?
No, I just, can you just generally outline what has changed?
It's very straightforward.
One floor off.
Yeah, the owner at number 180 was here at the last meeting, that's why we asked for the deferral to have consultation with him. We did. Bottom line, the second floor has been pulled back, and that has satisfied the neighbor. He signed in support, that's what it is.
It's just been pulled back, it's not, it's still a rear two-story addition. That's what I thought from the-
Correct.
But I thought I read somewhere that now is one story, but that's, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
No? Okay, anybody? Take it into committee? Okay, go ahead.
Given those changes and that the adjacent neighbor is no longer opposing, I believe that this is minor, and I would move approval of the requested variances with no conditions.
Seconded. Okay, motion to approve, moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Ms. Valentini. All in favor? The application's been approved.
Madam Chair, members of committee, thank you.
Okay, let's go to 44, 97 Yardley. 97 Yardley, is the opposition still here?
Yes.
Okay, can you grab seats along the front row, please? Panel members, we have before us a copy of the draft plan of survey, copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, staff reports from development engineering, as well as tree protection and plan review. We have 13 form letters in support, signed by residents on Yardley, Galbraith, and Tiago, and we have opposition from 101 Yardley. Okay, whenever you're ready, Mr. Mastandrea.
Actually, I have a-
Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Leo Mastandrea. I am the agent for the owners at 97 Yardley. And we are here today to sever the lot into two and construct two new detached dwellings. We met with planning to address some of their concerns, and they are now satisfied and in support of our application. It was more architectural front facade. The development engineering department have no concerns, and we do agree to their conditions. Forestry has no concerns, and we do also agree with their conditions. We did submit 13 letters of support from the surrounding neighbors, you should have them there. I'd like to first speak to the consent, and if you turn to the first page on my handout. So the pink is our property at 97 Yardley. The yellow are all lots exactly what we're asking for, frontage of 25, and the same lot area as what we're asking. There are 14 of them. I believe eight are on Yardley, and the other six are on Galbraith, the street behind. And based on the frontage in the lot area, planning has agreed that because of this fact, the severance will be consistent with what is prevailing in that area. As far as the variances are concerned, the variances are also consistent with what's been approved here at the committee and existing in the area. If you turn pages 11 through 21, they'll show you all the highlighted variances, which are similar to what we're seeking. This neighborhood is in transition. Our development does respect and reinforce the physical character of the neighborhood. We do comply with the building height, the rear yard setback, the front yard setback, the neighboring side yard setback, the building length, the building depth, and both front and rear landscaping. The variances, in my opinion, are minor. Our proposal's appropriate for the development and use of the land, and the purpose of the zoning bylaw and the official plan are maintained. In conclusion, it is my submission that we do meet the four tests. If you have any questions?
I was a bit confused by your comment about you meeting, you indicated all of the various things that you meant, side yard, backyard. You are not asking for variances on any of those.
No.
You meet all those components of the existing bylaw.
Yes.
Question I have is, looking at the lot study that you've given us, so in that specific block, what are the lot sizes of the remaining houses on that block? Are they, are they pretty much 50 footers as well?
No, so-
Are we going to end up with having a new, you know, like if-
No.
Your is approved, you've now starting to incremental change to the entire block?
The original plan of survey are all 50-foot lots. Some of them have been split into 25s, some of them have been split two into three, so they're around 33 and a half. So there's a mixture of 25, 33, and 50s. As well in that package, there's also consent approved by the committee with the exact same frontage and lot area.
So are there any consents on this actual street that have been approved? It doesn't look like it to me and from my view-
No.
-of the neighborhood, like some of the infills you're talking about appear to be just single houses on larger-ish lots that are already existing at that size. So you're sort of, to me, starting, I would say, a new trend in terms of dividing the lots. I didn't get the sense that there were any lots that had been subdivided when I drove down the block.
As far as I know, based on our study, but it only went back 10 years, so the last 10 years, no.
So those were existing lot sizes?
They're existing.
New infills, but-
Correct. But they are consistent with what we are asking. And you can see there's two on the corner, on both sides of us. Which, which one?
The ones that you're pointing out that have similar lot sizes, that you're-
All, all the yellow.
Okay, but I can't read the number, 103, 105?
103, 105.
Yeah, the corner, 103, 105, across the street. The other two on the other block.
103.
105, 113, and 116.
Oh, I see. So these are lots that have bungalows currently on them?
No, some are bungalows. I have photos of all of them, actually.
Okay.
Or some of them on the, if you look at my handout on the photo section, you can see the addresses at the bottom. Some of them are bungalows, some of them are two stories. I just took the photos of the two stories. So it's a mixture, and it is an area in transition, like I said.
You don't, you don't have a picture of 103 and 105, right?
I do, actually. I do have a picture of 103 and 105.
Can you put on the overhead if you have it?
Sure.
Thanks.
It looked like it, the original lot size was like-
They look bigger than, than this one here.
105? That's 105, that's, that's-
That's 105, that's, that's. This is 87. They're all on Yardley.
What's the frontages for those, do you know?
These frontages are 25.
25.
Exactly the same as what we're proposing, 7.62.
Okay. Okay, any more questions before we go to the opposition? You'll have an opportunity to ask more questions. Okay, we'll have you stand down. We'll have you back after we hear from the opposition. How many people are speaking? Three. Okay. So give that to staff, please. And then, before you start, we need your name and address.
Stan Burrows, 95 Yardley Avenue. Property direct, directly adjacent to the property on the west side.
Okay.
It was interesting to listen to some of the comments about the properties that he's talking about that are currently 25 feet wide. This is a fairly old neighborhood. My house was built in 1949. Many of the two-bedroom bungalows that are on the street were sort of the post-war houses, as I'm sure you're aware. So the property sizes are, I believe, like the 25-foot lots have been there since probably before the zoning bylaw was, was written. So looking at what, what the applicant wants to do, and many of these variances are basically as a result of the fact that he wants to split the lot into two. I think that's, that's, that's the main, the main thing. And I look at this as, you know, that's a 36 and 1/2 percent reduction from the, the standard size of a lot, which is, which is 38, 38 feet. 36 and 1/2 percent is, is, in my view, doesn't really seem minor, even though there are several houses in the, in the area that are older houses that, with 25-foot lots. This is, I think, one of the things you were mentioning about, this is probably one of the first ones on Yardley to, to be severed. That's, that's one of the concerns that, that we have is that what we're, we're looking at doing here is really increasing the density of, of the area. There are a number of 25-foot lots. This is, we could end up splitting all of them at some point as, as the neighborhood changes. The, that, that I think constitutes more of a, a change in density, which I think is maybe sort of out of the scope of, of committee of adjustment in the sense that, like, if you're going to change the zoning bylaw and you'd have to, you may change the official plan to, to say that we're going to increase the density of these residential neighborhoods, that I think that, maybe that should be done by council. But in any event, this is, this, it's going to add to the, the traffic in the area as well because Yardley Avenue is a fairly busy street. It, we're, as you come down Bermondsey, across O'Connor, it turns into Yardley. That is a, a major thoroughfare for a lot of people. There's, traffic calming measures were, were brought into the area to try and slow people down, but it, it, it doesn't do a very good job of that. I worry, once we start to run out of 40-foot lot, or 50-foot lots on, on this street, to then we move to the, to the smaller lots and try to split those as well. The, there's, there's another issue that we have in the area is, is flooding. The, down at the west end of the, of the street, it's, we're lucky we're up on a, on a higher part, but the, the houses down at the west end of the street and along Westview, which runs sort of north and south or alongside of O'Connor, that they've, they flood regularly. I mean, the city is in the, in the process of, of trying to change or upgrade the systems, but these systems are, are, are old in, in, in this area. I think that's probably good for me. I'll let my other neighbors. Oh, I do have, some of these were also the comments of, of my neighbor from number 88, Dev Singh. He was here most of the afternoon, but unfortunately.
I know, we're running. Did you want to submit the comments or are you already incorporated them into?
I've incorporated them into mine, but if we could just register his name as, as an opponent, as, as an opposition as well.
Number 88.
Number 88.
What's his name, sorry?
Dev, D E V, Singh.
Yep.
S A N G H.
All right.
Just a quick question, just on your, your lot, what's your lot frontage?
We're 50 by 100-foot lot.
And would you, would you say that that was the dominant?
Sorry?
The alternate to what was presented by the applicant, would you say your lot is the dominant lot in the area? Is that the dominant character?
It's, it is sort of a mixture, like the, the, sort of the west half of the street, I think, is, there's a lot of the two-bedroom bungalows, which I think are sort of that standard lot size.
Yeah.
Once you get to the other half, it's, there's, there's a fair number of 50-foot lots and there's a couple of other sizes, like there's, as he showed on his map, there's a few 25s.
And not all the bungalows are 20, or, not, not all the bungalows are on 25-foot lots as well, right?
No.
East York bungalows are historically on properties that are wider than 25 feet.
Yeah, yeah. The, the, most of the bungalows down at the, the west end of the street are probably on the, the, what is it, the, is it the 12 meters?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Heather Liberty. I'm at 90 Yardley Avenue. I'm in one of the tiny two-bedroom houses on the 25-foot lot. I'm across the street. A lot of the houses on the street are post-war bungalows, so you're looking at fairly small houses on good-sized lots. And one of the issues that we have been dealing with on this street is the sewer system is totally inadequate. We have, starting from where we are at the top of the hill, going down the hill to Westview, basements flood every time we get a heavy rain. And they flood all the way along Westview as well. And now we have a condo building at the end of the street, which is just going to exacerbate the whole problem. These are original sewer systems. They've never been updated. The city has a plan to fix the flooding problems, but when they're going to get to our street, we don't know. We have not been told. I have been going to the meetings, but at this point, we just don't know. My issue with the severance is with a compromised sewer system already, we're going to be adding a lot of people to the area, a lot of new houses. Because if we have this one lot severed, they're going to go for other lots. And there's quite a few 50-foot lots on the street. So the population density is going to do nothing but increase on infrastructure that can't handle the load right now. We also have a real issue with the traffic. It's just, it's getting insane going up and down the street because we are the only street with stoplights at either end. You either have to go basically down to St. Clair or up to Sunrise to get across. And I'm just afraid that if we start severing lots, it's not going to end. Population density is far going to strip what the infrastructure can handle. Additionally, as we put bigger and bigger houses on these lots, the green space is what absorbs a lot of the rain. We're losing all our green space on the street, which again, is going to make the flooding problems even worse.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm George Eastman. I'm at 91 Yardley, two doors over, if you will. Just to emphasize my neighbors' concerns, the, in my mind, and I haven't paced all the way up and down the neighborhood, they're mostly 50-foot lots, maybe 35. And for our street, this would be the first house that they're looking to subdivide a 50 into 25. In order to do that and be successful, they've triggered seven variances to the bylaws. Now, we have a number of infill houses that have not triggered any variances. They're all in the 50-foot lots. I think there was one across the street from me and he wanted a little bit more porch. Yeah, okay. So, you know, this is very, very inconsistent to the neighborhood complexity. As we mentioned, there's a lot of bungalows. I believe they're two-bedroom bungalows. Hmm? Yes, there's two bungalows, two-bedroom bungalows. The proposal here is two four-bedroom. All right? Now, I brought up a kid on my lot backyard, trying to keep her in there. She climbed fences really well, but it doubled the size and barely enough to contain one kid. Here we have potential six kids in a postage-stamped backyard. You know, which raises my mind of safety concern. The kids can't play in the backyard, they're going to go to the street. And keep in mind, we have speed bumps with traffic lights on either end. With the crosstown construction in Allen-Eglinton, we're a great throughfare. As you said, Sunrise, you can't make a left-hand, you, you can't go straight through. Our streets, you can go straight through and get all the way out to Warden. All right, there's a little bit of a dipsy-doo. But it's a alternative path. And with my experience in Highway 7 in Markham, even though the construction's finished, it's still a mess. Okay, traffic's just horrendous, will be being used as a shortcut. Okay, a couple of other concerns I have is with the, the way that's laid out. My apologies to the architect. I played around a little bit. This is what we're looking at, two, what I'm going to call almost townhouse-esque houses. And you saw some of the pictures here with the setbacks, you know, the variation in the frontage. Okay, yard in the front, whereas here, we're looking at two driveways and two doors, separated by four feet. Okay? So we have this much in between, to the extent that they had to say, oh, they're so close, we have to put a fireproof door and a fireproof window in there? Okay, fire resistant. Got the wrong terminology. 45-minute fire-resistant window and door between the two houses, which I believe is unheard in our neighborhood. Okay, there's, there's a similar house north of us that is, in my mind, an eyesore, where they put, I believe you threw up a picture, but, you know, all the way through is variations, except when you get down to the west end of the street. I think the architect who did the subdivision had a lot of carbon and paper. Okay, two-bedroom bungalow. All right? So I'd like to urge that this severance is denied.
Panel members, do you have any questions of the speaker?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mastandrea, speak to the issues raised, please.
So one of the issues was regarding the landscaping. We comply with the landscaping bylaw in the rear yard and in the front yard. If I look to, that's 115 Yardley. It's essentially almost a three-story dwelling. And, and this is another one at 139 Yardley. And the variances for this property are consistent and above what we are asking. With respects to the lots, containing the characteristics of the neighborhood, 14 lots on the immediate area that are exactly the same size as what we're seeking. The stormwater would be the same if we were to build one home or two homes as far as the stormwater. The sewers, the sewer system, I don't think there's an issue with the sewer system. When we look at the houses that were built on the street, the next street, Galbraith, these are the houses that are directly across on Galbraith, one block over. That's the two in from the corner. Those are the two on the corner. And I believe these are the ones that are across. So in my opinion, I do feel that it does meet and match the characteristics of the neighborhood. In fact, we removed our garage to satisfy planning, to not have a room above our garage, so it looks more, this is the characteristics of the neighborhood.
Excuse me, could, could you clarify your last comment? You said you removed your garage?
Yes. Initially, we had a similar design to this, with the garage, living room above.
That's what I've got. You changed it?
Yeah, because the.
We got the revised drawing?
You have the revised. We didn't submit until we dealt with planning. So planning said that this is out of character for the neighborhood, so we agreed. So we removed the.
Ours has a garage.
Sorry, we didn't remove the garage, we removed the room above.
You said the garage, you said you removed the garage.
Sorry, I'm mistaken.
The garage is still here, it's still.
So the garage is there, just that.
Still an integral garage.
It's still integral garage, but there's no room above, so, so we don't have that.
Those windows above it are gone? Is that what you're saying? Like, I'm fully confused. So what we have is correct. So with the wind, so you have the door, right? And then.
What you have is correct.
You step up and then there's two windows above the garage and then you go to the next floor?
Correct.
Okay, so.
As opposed to having the garage, then a living room, then.
Ours is like this.
Ours is similar to this, correct. Which planning was, that's why planning agreed to our proposal, is because we removed the living room above the garage.
Did it increase the height or no?
It did. It decreased the height, it decreased the, the, there was two heights. One was for the soffit and one was for the main wall.
Ultimately, what happens when you have the living room above the garage? I'm projecting, you add, you end up with another half-story.
Right, which, which we agreed, which we agreed with, and that's why then they were in support of our application, because now this is more in keeping with the neighborhood.
of our application, because now this is more in keeping with the neighborhood.
Okay, the example for number 129 Yardley, that lot complies with lot area, like it's slate...
It's the same-sized lot.
I know, because you're showing 43.1% coverage variance request, but there's no variance for frontage, so it's...
It was an existing lot?
It's an existing lot.
It was an existing lot, but the lot size is all the yellow?
Right. So it's what you say here, 7.62 and 232.26.
All those ones I highlighted in the yellow are identical to what we're asking. Frontage and lot area.
But that was a pre-existing lot. It was a pre-existing lot.
Yes, it was a pre-existing lot, but it's the same size.
Okay. And the, I know, most of your examples are actually on Galbraith, so these other ones that are in yellow, okay, I get that they're the same lot area, frontage to what you're proposing, but what kind of lot coverage is on those? They're just the standard bungalows or... I mean, I drove the street, and to be honest, the lots didn't really look like there were any small ones, or at least not a lot of them. Most of them look like they're kind of all the same.
Well, I have a plan of subdivision, so all the lots were 50-foot lots. Some of them, which you can see, were split at some point to 25s. Others, they took two lots and made three, so they were about 33, 34. So some lots are 50, some lots are around 33, 34, and some lots are 25.
Are you suggesting that the 25 ones were created by consent recently?
No. On Yardley, no, but on Galbraith, yes. On Yardley, they were done at some point, because I do have a plan of subdivision that does show that they were all 50s when they were first administered.
Okay, so, sorry, just back to what I was saying. So forget about Galbraith for a second, I just want to talk about Yardley. So the different sized lots, in terms of coverage on those lots...
Yes.
How does that compare with what you're asking for?
Look for...
I get that there's examples that you've given us, but in terms of the...
Page 11.
Yeah?
Page 11 has, I believe, 129 Yardley.
That's one, yeah. At 43.1, that's one, but what about the rest of the yellow ones? Like, what's on there in terms of coverage?
I just pulled the recent ones. I have another file. I just pulled out some of the recent ones, but I do have another file. Some of them are, for example, 56 Yardley.
Right.
That's 38.03%.
Okay, it's not on this map of yours here.
It's way off here.
Yeah, it's way down here, but so these other yellow ones, do you have any, any coverages for those or not? Because the only one we have it for is this one, the rest are all Galbraith, are your examples.
No, I don't have them because I didn't have decisions. Those were the...
So they're mostly like, original bungalows?
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so presumably the coverage is in compliance then?
Yes.
Okay.
Keep in mind, our research, when we do it, it only goes back 10 years. So I'm sure we would have found more if it went back further, but it doesn't.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
No.
Okay, we'll take it into committee then for discussion and a decision.
Based on the information that we have, I have concerns with the proposed severances, that the proposed 25-foot lots are not in keeping with the character, predominant character of that particular block, and would set a precedent for severance of other 50-foot lots that are located along that block.
I share that concern, in addition to which the, the people in opposition have raised, I think, real concerns about, is there sufficient services to, to deal with that increasing density? And it sounds as though there's already servicing problems, but I share your concern. Also, my impression of the street is not what this drawing were, but this plan would tend to suggest. My impression was, as, as the chairman said, a sort of a uniformity of character, and I find the proposal out of keeping with that uniformity.
I agree with it. Great, we'll need a motion.
Based on those comments, I would put forward a motion for refusal of the requested severances and requested variances.
Okay, I have a motion moved by Mr. Solomon to refuse the application, seconded by Mr. Nipoll, all in favor? The application's refused.
Thank you.
Okay, for the residents, if you haven't filled in the decision request card, please go and give it to staff. Okay, item number 46, 273 to 275 Vaughan. Opposition still here? Okay, all right, I got a list of stuff here. So we have before us a copy of the draft plan of survey, copy of plan of survey site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from Ty Ryuk, the agent, actually a couple of them, one from September, one from December. And it includes proposed revisions to the plans in the most recent correspondence, which I might add, we received very late last night. We have email correspondence from an external liaison, the right-of-way control from Bell Canada, which is for information only, staff report from development engineering, as well as tree protection and plan review, correspondence in support from 191 Pinewood Avenue, as well as 271 Vaughan Road, correspondence in opposition from 193 Pinewood. Can I have your name, please?
Joe Mahavik. I'm acting as an agent for the applicant, and I'll be quick and allow the planner to do the bulk of the presentation. Basically, the only thing I really wanted to do was give you some history on this. This has been an active file for more than a year, at least in the background, when I was a city councilor for this area. The proposal has gone through a number of iterations, working with city staff, and it is at this point now. I would have supported it as a city councillor, and that's why, frankly, I'm standing here before you now. I think the applicant has worked very hard with the neighbors, and the reason why you see the very minor inches-only small variances was as, as a result of a meeting, a small community meeting that was held with neighbors in the various directions to deal with any issues. That meeting happened on November 25th, and since then, the applicant has tried to resolve those issues, especially the neighbor to the north on Pinewood wanted a foot instead of 1.5 as the bylaw, and the proposal was 0.9, to basically go to 1.2, so they are agreeable. The resident on the Vaughan roadside is also agreeable. I think the general consensus, yes, there is an exception that I think you're going to hear from, the community surrounding there is supportive of this, as is the city planner as well, has, has reviewed it a number of times and finds it acceptable, and has, as you can see, no letter of opposition as well. So I think all the checkboxes have been hit with this application, and certainly I would support it, both as the agent, but also as someone who lives around the corner on Yew Wood.
Okay, Mr. Mahavik, I think it's great that, that there was a lot of work done on this. I would like you to know, the committee does have concerns, because there are a number of revisions, and I understand they're small. I did go through them last night, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but under 46F, based on the chart that you submitted, I guess you submitted it...
Yes, sir, yes.
There's a variance missing, because on that chart, you're asking for a lot frontage variance of 11.58, and there isn't anything here that I see for lot frontage, which...
So that's related to the single-detached dwelling, which is 275 Vaughan Road. The, there isn't a lot frontage that's required. It's, it's been modified, that's why it's still there, but a lot frontage, lot frontage variance is not required. In addition to that, as a result of, I guess...
So can you maybe, because I, can you maybe go through all the revisions?
Sure, and I think just for ease of reference, I'll give you a handout with where we marked up the notices with the revisions.
Well, oh, these notices, it would be...
The public notices as revised, for the revised plans that have been submitted. But just to go through it in detail, basically, basically the result of these changes was from relocation of 273A, which is the most northerly semi-detached dwelling, pushing it by approximately 0.3 of a meter southerly. And this was to achieve a, to accommodate the neighbor at 191 Pinewood Avenue, to provide them with the additional separation distance that they desired, which we had no problems with. As a result of that, what happened was, is the building shifted, so first block of the semis, the second block of the semis, and the single detached, all shifted southerly, in addition to slight modifications of the lot lines as well. So there are modifications to, one, side yard setbacks, lot areas, and also to FSI. But in it, just in addition to this, as a result of conversation with the zoning department yesterday, and I do have an email from Steve Prince confirming this, the lot frontage variance is related to the semi-detached dwellings for 273A, 273B, 274A, and 274B. The actual lot frontage requirement is six meters, so those variances related to lot frontages are no longer required. In addition to that, the variant, the notice indicates...
So I really think, I respect your explanation...
And let me just...
What I really would like you to start with is to go through the notices we have.
Sure.
Tell us the revisions, and tell us what's being removed, if anything, so that we know exactly what we have before us now, because I, like I said, I was going by your charts, so I may have made mistakes, but...
So this means it's a red line?
I see, okay.
So this is a comprehensive status for everything you're asking for?
Because, as you know, normally the committee doesn't really entertain...
And I totally understand. We're totally in your hands in this regard, where we would obviously like to proceed forward today, but when you read the notices, so we'll start with the consent.
Okay, so let's, yeah, so let's...
Can I ask one...
Sure.
Do the people that are appealing or opposed, do they know about these changes? Have they been given these changes?
This, these changes were a result of our conversation with 191 Pinewood.
So these people know about them?
So, no, they don't, they wouldn't know, but at the time, sorry, if I could just...
No, but so did you not have discussions with them?
We've had a public consultation, open house, on November 25th, 2019. They were in attendance. Up until December 9th, we were under the impression that everybody was satisfied, and then we saw the letter from, dated December 10th, that was in opposition. So that was yesterday, and we're here today. So as a result of that, no, we didn't anticipate any opposition, but there is. So there was no disingenuous efforts to hide anything from the neighbors.
No, I wasn't suggesting that, but I don't think it's fair for us to expect the opposition to be able to respond to something that is, has so many complex changes. I'm, I'm the same as the chairman, this is a lot of changes. I appreciate why they're there, I appreciate you're trying to accommodate an opposition, but we've also got people here that are at a disadvantage, I would suggest.
And I would, I would submit to the committee is that, like you said, it was an effort to work with neighbors, we did have our own public open house. The changes, if you go through them, and that's your decision to go through them, are pretty minor. There is deletions of certain variances specifically related to lot frontage. However, at the end of the day, we are in committee's hands, whether or not, if these changes are considered minor and appropriate for it to proceed today, and we're hoping that you would agree that they're minor enough to proceed and have this matter heard.
So, sorry, just back to, have you had a chance today to...
Today, yes, we did.
Do you know what their concerns are?
Yes, we do.
Any of these changes here address the concerns that they...
Well, there was one concern about lot frontage, so regarding the semis, those variances are no longer required. There was concerns about traffic generation, and traffic department does not comment on this application. In addition to that, there's currently existing on the property two semis in addition to a church, so the traffic generation, I would submit to committee, would be less than what's existing there today. In addition to FSI and also heights, it's within the range of what's been approved if the committee wishes to hear those submissions.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I'm flipping through this, because it's a lot. Can you just tell me which ones are deleted? Because I can't...
Sure. If you go to part one, 273, part one, variance number four is deleted. In addition, so for part one...
Hang on, part one.
So we're talking about minor variances, part one?
Yeah, sorry, I'm starting with part two.
So it says minimum lot frontage requirement is 12 meters, it's actually six, and we're proposing 7.63, so the variance is no longer required.
Can you just explain that, so we understand?
Sure. What the zoning department, they made an error, what they did was, the zoning map indicates an F value, which is the frontage value, and the frontage value for this site is 12. And what they did was, they applied that 12 meters to each individual semi-detached unit, where I suppose it was supposed to be applied to the entire semi-detached block and divided by two, resulting in six meters. So as a result of that, and that confirmation, I do have an email from Steve Prince confirming that, and I could just put it up there. And it's up there, and basically what it says is that it's six meters, it would be six meters lot frontage for each individual semi-unit. In addition to that, the lot area requirement, you'll note on variance number, looking at part one, looking at the, so basically, the lot area requirements at number three, it says 360 meter required, it's actually 180 square meters that's required.
Sorry, Madam Chairman, I think we're doing a disservice to everybody by hearing this application today. I appreciate why we are where we are, I don't believe the applicant is in any way trying to mislead us. But I think trying to digest what's before us, and, and to provide for knowledgeable comments on that and a good decision at quarter after six on an agenda day where we've covered half the world, is a bit unreasonable. I think, and I'm not a fan of deferrals at all, nor are we, I believe that this application should be deferred so that it can get the kind of attention that it deserves, and that the people that are opposed have an opportunity to at least understand what is currently before us. My fear is that an hour and a half from now, we're going to have gone through all these numbers, and we're going to be so totally confused that we're not going to make a good decision.
I also know this is not typical, but if there could be a date that could be a sign for this matter to return, as opposed to being sinny die, just because of the efforts that have been made...
We don't defer a sinny die, we do three to six months.
I'm just asking.
I don't know, it's, it would, first of all, depend how quickly...
Yes, I understand.
...you come back now, assuming you're going to talk to these neighbors as well, and take that opportunity to perhaps resolve whatever their issues are, since it's going to be deferred. And I, I don't know how soon we can have it back, three months at the earliest, or do you think, if, if it's brought back clearly with everything, is there a chance you can slot it in February? I don't...
I think ultimately it will save us time if we can do that, yeah.
Probably looking at March, at the earliest.
Understood. I'm just asking the question.
Could you just turn your mic on? There's a little button, just push it on, no, in, in the, yeah, that's it.
It's a red button.
Is the red light on? In the mics? Yep, thanks.
So I was just saying, I don't, not sure if it matters at this point, but we were aware that there was a slight change from, from...
that there was a slight change from our neighbor, and from our understanding at this point, it is so small a change, and the, and in our, our opposition is so large, like the entire fundamental proposal is off, as it, in terms of the character of our small strip of our street, so I'm not sure if that changes your mind or not, I mean, yeah, and just also to be aware, they're presenting an image that everyone's on board, and there's all this support, we're actually representing four of the eight houses on our street that are all opposed to this project. So, so in terms of us being the only opposition, we're representing them as well. And if anything, I'm saying if there is going to be changes to that, you know, it's a funny situation, where a lot of neighbors are happy to see the church, whatever, they're okay with the church leaving and seeing new development, but not this development. So I don't know if that matters, but anyways, I figure I put that out there, because obviously we know, we're happy to speed this process along as well, so, but that's up to you, I'm happy to come back.
I think the committee has just some concerns with the number of changes here, and recognizing the fact that they are small numerically, but we just- ... to digest, we got the information very late.
Because really, the crux of our argument is, we're on a street with 50-foot, 40-50-foot lots, and there's only eight of them.
Right.
And to jam five family homes, four semis and one detached, it just doesn't match that part, but it's being passed off as a Von Road characteristic, because it would match the busier, smaller homes of Von Road, but not the Pinewood, and I think that's the problem here. But I don't know if that makes-
If there was, if there was a request for deferral, the applicant would have to decide whether or not he supported a request for deferral, and you would be asked as well. What I'm hearing you say is, deferral wouldn't be of any purpose to you unless the applicant was going to do major revisions to the proposal. My understanding is that's not his intent, and I don't, I don't mean to paint him in a negative way because of that, what the intent is, is to clarify what we actually have in front of us, because it would be so easy to make a mistake in this right now, because there are so many changes. So if there were a deferral, I gather you, you said you'd be happy to come back, but you're-
Happy, happy, I should say, happy, but we're accommodating.
But you're, you're opposed to the general intent of this application, so that's not going to change, and the kind of revisions you'd be looking for are not the sorts of things that-
We have never felt an openness of dialogue-
I'm not saying that, I'm just, I don't believe that, I don't believe that they're looking to reduce the number of lots and-
No.
-take stories off, and all that kind of stuff, which is maybe what would address your concerns, so.
So I was just suggesting, maybe there's some benefit to addressing that issue, because that really is the main issue, it's the bigger one that won't go away.
Well, I think panel members, first of all, is to decide whether or not you would like to see this deferred, because of all the adjustments that are-
I'm in my colleague's hands, I thought there was merit in a deferral, because I think-
I'm just curious, I have a question. You were sort of going through frontages, saying now, because it's a set of semis, there's no longer frontage, and there's no variances, does that have a ripple effect on all the other floor space index?
There are, there's slight modifications to FSI, to lot areas, and also to setback, and that is all a result of the building shifting southerly.
But apart from the building shift-
Yes.
Because the frontage is removed, the required lot frontage, there's no other issues, like that doesn't have another, further impact on the changes we've made here?
No, no. Three, four, six. So all the variants, just to be clear, all the variances remain the same, with the exception of lot frontage variance related to semis being eliminated.
Some of them have increased in size, in terms of variances, in terms of coverage?
The GFA hasn't increased, so the GFA remains the same as the original, it's the result of the lot areas shifting or changing that creates the FSI numbers either going up or going down, yeah.
Under part two, variance number six-
Yes.
Are you saying that the lot area is incorrect, or what the zoning bylaw permits? Or is that, like, I'm just-
No, so if you look at number two, the part two was originally 123.99, it's decreased down to 122.97, and as a result of that, the FSI goes up from 1.58 to 1.59. But you'll also note that the GFA 195.5 number, that remains the same.
Right, I just was curious why they scratched out the 107.31 meters, and it says-
So it, so basically, the point eight would now have to be multiplied to the 122.97.
Just to put it in perspective, Madam Chair, there's 62 revisions here.
Yeah, I, that's not, that's a lot of revisions. I mean, I personally would be inclined to defer this, but it's up to you guys.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm going to bring forward a motion of deferral, we'll see what happens with it. I understand that the change is a result of consultation, and for that, I'm very appreciative. I understand that there's major opposition with the concept, and that's unlikely to be resolved with a revised application, if, if the variance changes that we're talking about are just clarified. But notwithstanding, I think that we stand a much better chance of making a good decision with a clear application before us. I'm concerned that with 50-odd changes, the chances for mistakes are just too high, and therefore, I recommend that the application be deferred to the first possible meeting. I appreciate that this creates a delay, and I would not want to make the delay any greater than it has to be.
Okay, I have a motion to defer the item, including recirculation fees-
Yes.
-to the first available meeting date, after you bring back everything. Do I have a second there? Okay, so that's moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Solomon, is there, are all in favor? Okay, so the item's been deferred.
Thank you.
You're, you're the only ones left, but you told me to keep you till the end, so I didn't, yeah.
We need it every minute.
Okay, well, I saw you calculating and calculating over there, so I thought, now he's not ready yet. Okay, that's item number 38. Okay, just bear with-
Oh, is it Heath Street?
39, sorry. Okay, just bear with me one second here.
Is that 140s, 50s?
Yeah. All right, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, email correspondence from the manager, permits and enforcement, parking, transportation services, a staff report from tree protection and plan review, and a lot of opposition from residents on Rose Park, Heath, and Bogden, as, yeah, that's it, that's all.
I'm Chair, I am Peter Higgins of Peter Higgins Architect Incorporated, I'm here today with my client, Adam Patel, who will be, who would like to build a new house on this property. It is at present-
Can you guys maybe go outside, or?
It's, it's almost without question the smallest house on the property in the neighborhood that is present on the property, and we would like to build a new home. We've had two hours' worth of consultation, back and forth. The site plan that you see on the screens, or on your screens, show, among other things, a shortened house, so that we have no length variance. We've increased the east, or what is on the bottom of your drawing, side yard setback from .9 to 1.05 meters, whereas 1.2 is required. We've maintained the .9 on the west, which is the upper section. We've talked a lot about windows, privacy overlooks, et cetera, and the main thing is, we've been able to reduce the FSI, although we thought 66 was quite reasonable. I'm going to suggest you write it in at 64.5, or .645, the reason being, we have not done the calculations yet, we know we are above 60, but we're something less than 66.
Okay.
So just to go through the-
Yeah.
If I may, to go through the variances, number one is reduced to .645. Number two, which is the east side yard setback-
Oh, the square meters for number one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to crunch those numbers.
Yeah, to go calculate again.
I'm afraid so, unless somebody can do it for me. Can you do, eh, shoot, no, I'll have to get right back to you.
All right.
Number, number two, the detached dwelling relocated 1.05 meters from the east lot line. We maintain number three at .9 for the west lot line. No change to the parking space, we were all prepared with lots of photographs to show you that there was lots and lots of parking on the front yards, for houses that had driveways, had garages, and did not. So we felt that it was the way the neighborhood is going, and the property is too small, too narrow, to have either an integral garage or a driveway to the back. And so the neighbors graciously agreed, that was not an issue. The maximum permitted length under number five is 17 meters, we had a variance of 17.6. We are now down to 16.5 as the longest dimension. It does vary, because according to what you're seeing on the screen, we have notched the corners, and the east side is narrower, but nevertheless, the, the neighbors have agreed to give me a week to present to them revised site plan and revised numbers, but I'm coming to you with the neighbors saying that they're okay with the changes, and perhaps they'd like to speak while I number crunch.
Can I clarify?
Yes, sir.
Didn't get them all. Number two, it's, is it 1.05?
Yes, correct.
And three was 1.05, and what was five?
Nope, three remains as .9.
And variance five is removed.
No, five, number five is gone?
No, you said three. Variance five is gone, because we've reduced it well below the 17 meters.
Okay, thanks.
That basically was trying to take care of the neighbors' concerns, that they were going to feel boxed in, and that we weren't able to provide them with large notches that they have themselves, and the floor plan will not allow that, so we've done our best to shorten the house and notch the corners. We never had a height variance, but we've also moved the roof, the angled roof back a little bit, so that it's, again, less, allows more sun into the properties. So why don't I just take a few minutes and do my number crunching? Well, they always, they always do, and I know, I understand why. There would be no house left, given the side yard setbacks, it would be all garage and a front door, or we would have to be like the house to the east, which is Kelly's house, which is only a foot off the property line, in order to shift the house all the way over to have a narrow driveway to a non-existent backyard garage. So we think that we can convince transportation, but in the meantime, the parking fits very easily on the private property, fully on private property, plus some space. There had been some concern from forestry about a municipal tree, and what we've done is, we maintain the curb cut. We're leaving the curb cut as it is there existing, and we'll have to come over the sidewalk and then start to angle a little bit, but we'll save the tree, because nothing will change in the adjacency of the tree vis-à-vis the driveway. And we'll have to protect that tree during construction, of course.
In terms of the parking, then, are most of the parking spaces, is there, are most of them front yard parking, or are they parking on a driveway behind the front wall of the house?
No, most are in front, and there are quite a few, I have a pile of arguments to make, but given the lateness of this-
I wanted to bring that up as a, I didn't know if you were going to address it, but-
Well, we'll have to address transportation, and we'll say that if we're approved of the committee of adjustment for the front yard parking, as opposed to behind the main wall, we will then say it's fully on private property, we'll have permeable behaviors, which is the norm that's being asked these days, of course, and I expect we'll have success with transportation.
Okay, so you're going to go calculate, and we'll hear from the neighbors.
Good afternoon, members of the committee, and thank you for staying this late. My name is Michael Manette from M Plan Inc., and I'm retained by Lisa Nemiroff, owner of 141 Heath Street, and Kelly Blair, the owner of 145 Heath Street. I, I did submit a letter, which you hopefully have had an opportunity to read, and we had air photos and photos, I don't think I need to go through those, because we've had, as you've heard, we've had extensive discussions and negotiations this afternoon. I think, based upon the concerns we've raised, and based upon the constraints on the property, we've come to a reasonable compromise. I want to commend the applicant and his architect for working with us to try and accommodate the majority of the concerns, and we are happy to see the plans and the variances being changed. However, we remain effectively waiting for the plans to be shown to us in their final form, to accommodate what effectively become the notches and the reductions of the building footprint, and, and also, of course, the reduction of the roof line, which of course makes sense, because if you reduce the wall and move it back, you have to move the roof accordingly, so that would come automatically. We were interested in seeing what the final number is on the GFA, we thought we were around .64. I understand the need for .645 to provide some leeway until the numbers are crunched, because until the architect has the opportunity to finalize the plans, we really won't know what the final numbers are. However, if the committee chooses to make its decision today, then of course, we will have an opportunity between the period of your approval and the appeal period to determine whether or not we continue our support, but we still would have an opportunity, of course, if we're not satisfied with the plans, to appeal the decision to T-Lab, because in many cases, the committee chooses to tie the plans to the, the variances to the plans that are attached. In this case, we haven't got the plans yet, so I'm not sure how that gets dealt with, other than us having an opportunity to have a period of time for an appeal if we don't, if we're not satisfied with the plans provided. And then, of course, in order to deal with plans, because it's no longer tied to the variances, we would have to have some kind of private agreement or undertaking, that those plans would be the ones put forward for building permit, and that may be a separate agreement outside of your jurisdiction. So on the basis of that, subject to, I guess we'll hear the final numbers, we're satisfied that we've negotiated what seems to be a reasonable settlement on the matter, the variances now, we've, we've reduced one and eliminated one completely, we've reduced a number of others. We will look at your decision in its final form once we receive it, and then we'll have an opportunity to decide if we're going to be able to sign off on it effectively with the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins, I know you're calculating. The, the marked up plan that you have here, does that accurately reflect the changes in the variances? We could tie it to this? Okay?
Can you sign it, then? We need some way to identify it, okay?
There are, there are floor plans as well, that could be it, because we looked at those.
Okay, so maybe, Mr. Higgins, you can tell us which plans reflect, when it, when you're done calculating, you can tell us which plans reflect all the things you discussed, and we can tie it to all those plans.
I would suggest that the only way, because there are going to be a lot of plans, the only way that would make sense is, we would identify them as the plans that are signed and dated and by you, and filed with us today, otherwise, we're going to get them confused. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So do you need five, 10 minutes?
No.
Two? Okay. All righty.
That's why if they were saying we can't really attach plans, and the chairman was saying, well, what if we use these plans, and as long as he signs...
So you have the square footage, we'll start with that.
Square meters is 277.90.
Okay.
And I'll put that, I'll put that on the drawing.
Okay. 277.90 square meters.
277.9. Okay, I'll sign it at the bottom.
Okay.
Today is December 11th.
It is.
Okay, Kelly, I don't know if you want to initial this to say that you're in agreement? It's a photograph? And the owner...
We've got a lot of good change going on this afternoon, but we want to make sure it continues.
Oh, you're going to take a picture? Sure, go right ahead.
Yep, everyone's taking a picture.
It's a beautiful...
Let all this attention go to your...
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll file it if I may.
Sure, just make sure the members, then they know what we're voting on. So it's drawing A10 as amended. So I think that covers the concern of the opposition tying it to plans.
Yeah, which you, you know what, I'd be happy to submit the other two because they're, they're clearer. They're first and second floor plans.
Okay, we'll take them all now.
Will those photos be put onto the file, the committee file?
Building.
They're on the CV.
They're going to be officially... December 11th, their drawings A4 and A5, if you would like.
And A5, okay.
Yeah, they're the...
So it's A4, A5, and A10?
Correct.
All right.
And they're the first floor.
Oh, 1.0.
This is first and second floor. This very clearly shows the dimensions we've been discussing. Okay. I don't think you need to personally. I use those plans to show, I use those plans in blue to show them the difference between what we had in front of them before and what we're proposing.
You're using paper and not computers.
Our copies are still there?
It has all the, Mr. Niffel, it has all the dimensions on it.
It has, I am just, you know, a week from now, you're going to be so upset because you missed a digit somewhere.
I, that's why there's a lot of whiteout. I changed it a number of times because I had missed digits.
That's the one that goes with the decision.
They're providing the, they're providing the final version to us to sign off on, so those should probably get submitted as the final.
But if we make a condition that they build, be built substantially in accordance with this, this is going to stairs or wherever it goes, and they're going to have to look at this and determine...
We've looked at it carefully.
I'm just wondering if staff is going to be able to, but I'm not in the building.
But if building required it, would you be able to give them a cleaned up version that matches this, but it's done on, on the computer?
Yes, well, I've promised that for the neighbors, I'll have it within a week.
Yeah, they'll give them the computerized version. Okay, as long as there's no... Okay, as long as you're all good with this? Okay. Well, no, we're going to, our decision, assuming that's where committee's going, would have a condition that it matches the drawings that we received today, and then the other, getting the technical version where it's nice and clean that you're going to get, that's just sort of a moot point for building, so it's better for them to see instead of the scratched up version, but it would have to match this exactly.
I don't want to belabor the point, but would you have a concern if we only reference the site plan? I share my colleague's concern, there is so much on here. I can imagine staff in the building department just tearing their hair out.
I think we can be satisfied with that because we're going to get... Okay, I'll take them back.
So you're satisfied with just site plan, or you want the floor plans?
The site plan has all the numbers that are relevant to the...
And it's a little less confusing for somebody who hasn't seen all of this.
And if we, I mean, the subject to, that we're going to get the file plans...
Yes, you're going to get the file ones.
...we're going to feel anyway, so.
And you have a photograph of them, so, you know.
Yeah.
Double check. All right, any other questions? Panel members? All right, we'll take it into committee then for comments and a motion.
Well, I'm just going to move a motion to approve the requested variances as amended, subject to urban forestry conditions and that, and tie it to the site plan amended.
A1.0.
As signed by Peter Higgins Architect and filed with us today.
Great.
Question, do we need to put the transportation services report in?
No, because then...
Well, they put in here even if we, if we grant the application, they want to contact them, but I...
No.
They're going to have to do that anyway.
No, we don't need to do it, okay? Fine, I second it, second the motion.
Okay, motion moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? Okay, your application's approved as amended with the attached plan.
Thank you very much for your patience and understanding.
And the meeting's adjourned at 6:43. Thank you and happy holidays, everyone.
Long day.
Very long day.